President here. One thing I want to, a couple of housekeeping things here that necessar-- first thing we want to discuss in no particular order, two quick things before we go to public comment. Councilman Forbes has a letter here in front of us, and Fred, do you want to kick this off?
Yeah, actually, it's a letter from our gen-- the general manager of Hunter's Ridge Community Association and the board of that same association, and it's simply to let you know that at their last board meeting by a supermajority, key word, they voted to request that two, three, two things. One is that they'll send letters to Lee Dot and F Dot to request that the median cut through in front of Hunter's Ridge Boulevard be immediately closed because it's a very hazardous traffic situation, and we really want it closed. We don't want, originally, Lee Dot was talking about closing it in two steps, closing it where you couldn't turn towards town, but somebody coming from the east could make a turn off of Beach Road into Hunter's Ridge Boulevard, and we want, but they said as soon as the traffic kicks up a little more, they can close it all together. We want to just skip that intermediate, close it now, and we're also in this letter indicating there should be a signalized, signal put in at either Trade View 1 or 2, 2 is the better one. I just spoke to Mike Maurer about it and explained it to him, and he didn't, if he has anything to say, he can make the comments. And then what we're also asking is that city council allow or give vote to have the mayor simply write a letter indicating that we like this as well, but we're going to send it anyway to Lee Dot and F Dot as well as MPO.
I would make a motion to send that letter.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Karamba?
Aye.
Councilman Duitt?
Aye.
Councilman Slack?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman O'Flynn?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Great, thank you, Fred, good work.
Now, one, one other little quick thing, I was at a Florida League of Cities meeting last Thursday afternoon, evening, and then Friday as part of the, they've got a new name for this committee, but it's Policy Committee on Utilities, key word, Transportation and Natural Resources. I wanted to tell you, two, the two biggest focuses of that committee for several years has been local home rule, they're not happy with the, what the state's trying to do to all the cities, and also water, 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 quantity and quality, and so, and that appears that that's what the main thrust is going to be, and they, they propose things to the legislative body to support those, those issues. But along with that, they indicated that there's a bill coming up where they're going to try and change the amount of solid waste that can be put in to recycle, and, and it's going to, actually, it's going to have an impact on us, but we have what is the type of solid waste recycling pickup that is into the problem, and that's what you call a single stream. A lot of places will have paper and things like that in one container, and then all the pop and the beer cans and paint cans and another, and we, and ours, it all goes in one. So what I, I sent a, an email to Carl and asked if the appropriate member of staff that's in charge of this type of stuff could set up the opportunity for those on council would like to see the single stream recycle where their, all the stuff comes in and how it's sorted out and the problems that are associated with it, and they got two dates, 20th or the 21st of this month, I believe, yeah, yeah, no, July, July. So all we have to do is let them know which one we would like to go on, and we can do that by email, and then the last thing I was going to bring up, unless the mayor wants to do it, and that is, are we meeting on the 5th of July?
Yeah, well, no, I think that's a great point, that was going to be the second thing we were going to cover, but I think in no particular order, unfortunately, I cannot be here on the 5th of July, I know Councilman Schlack cannot be here, so it's a matter of, do we want to have a meeting or not? It's up to council, what's your pleasure?
What about a limited agenda, or no, maybe not? I'm just wondering about the Wonder Garden stuff, but, all right, I don't feel strongly.
I'll be here, I don't mind doing a meeting.
I'm good.
And I know a lot of the public, it works out better for evening meetings for them to attend versus the morning meetings, so.
Right.
At least for public comment, I think the evening one's a good way to go, so.
Okay. So, July 5th is on, Greg, good for you?
Yeah, I'm in town.
Yeah.
I don't leave until the 10th.
Okay, okay.
I can be here, and we'll have our meeting, our first big discussion, because you want to full hands all on deck on evaluation criteria, the core things we're evaluating, all that, and the next meeting.
Right, that's what's interesting about meetings and workshops in July when you have a family and try to have a, some semblance of a normal life, but, you know, you can't make every meeting unfortunately.
Right.
So.
Can I suggest to be a limited agenda because we will be missing two council people?
Okay, sure.
That's it.
Okay, very good. Council, anything else at this time? Okay, we're going to move on to public comment. Members of the public that would like to speak at this time, please come forward. Rick, hello.
Pretty good, Mayor. Council Rick Steinmeier for the record. When I was in the fraternity house at Penn State, we'd have a house meeting once a month, or once a week, I mean, and at the end of the meeting, we had an agenda, of course, and at the end of the meeting, we had what we called, unfortunately, and it was a sexist term, a bitch session.
Let's not use it.
Where we'd go around and the boys would all say, oh, Joe, you did this, and, you know, and I, you know, you shouldn't have done that, or something, and that reminded, and what happened here with the mayor today, just reminded me of that, we're all adults in this room, and we can't handle a little criticism, and we're pretty sad, a bunch of wimps, and I'm really, really impressed by the mayor and the way he put it out there, and that's out there now, and we can all work with it, it's the truth, and we can all handle the truth in this city, but in the spring. Now, we talked about Weeks Fish Camp and the marina there, but son of a gun, we don't own that, it's private property, and we'd like to have it do this, we'd like to do this, but unless we own it, how can we tell everybody what to do? This is where government gets in trouble, telling everybody what to do, it's a free country, if people have property rights, they have rights to do what they want to do, and then we change the rules, you can't make long-term commitments because some government's going to come along and change the rules, and that's a problem for us, so if we could buy the marina and make it public, keep it public, or whatever we want to do, that's a, I would look at that option. As far as I know, we got the money for the Wonder Gardens from the road impact fees, I think we ought to pay back the road impact fees out of general, out of general fund. I think it needs to be paid back, we need the money for the roads, sidewalks and stuff like that, I think it ought to be paid back on a general fund. If we're going to own it, we're going to pay for it. As far as the Wonder Gardens, if we're going to foreclose, foreclose, we, if we don't own it, we can't control it, so we, we need to close the books on it. We own it, get the title to it, and then if they don't want to be where, then that's too bad, we'll run it ourselves, but we're not going to be extorted by those people. Let's close the deal, it's been, it's been 30 days or better now, I was glad to see we were going to take it over, because I thought it would be less painful than going through a foreclosure procedure, but it looks like it's going to drag on and on and on and on, and just, so let's close it, and then we can make up, make up our minds. As far as the laundromat, that's Trish, Mark Trish, Tris, Tris owns that, Nabill Yusup does not own it, he leases the building, he doesn't care, because it's an old building, he don't want to own it, so take that into your consideration, thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Other members of the public?
Hello again, council, good afternoon.
Hello. Sorry about that.
It's okay, I forgive you. Anyway, in response to the discussion went on earlier, I just have a quick comment. As the city grows and it gets involved in more projects and there's more complexity, maybe this idea of limited government doesn't work anymore, you might want to consider having a strong mayor, an executive elected, and having a city council advise him, and then what is now the city manager would then become sort of an unelected assistant mayor. Now, to get back to the BSU question for a moment, Mr. Jenkins told you that the post office weighs the business response mail? I was given that lame excuse two months ago by Mary Mima. Now, until I came here today, I didn't know whether BSU would actually come up with a reasonable response to why there are 500 ballots that, you know, are not accounted for. Now I know, they don't have a reason, because the minute Mary Mima told me this, I went to the postmaster and I spoke with him, and he said, no, they encounter every single business reply envelope, it gets, it goes through a machine that reads it, it has BSU's account on it, and it gets charged to them. So he was clearly lying, that brings up the question as to whether this BSU elected, so-called elected board is legitimate, whether the prior year board is legitimate, whether Mr. Jenkins, who was hired by this board, is legitimate and is entitled to represent BSU here at all. I'd like to please consider this, again, I will bring you the evidence from the postal manual that belies the statement that Mr. Jenkins made before, that's all I have to say at this point.
Great, thank you. Other members of the public?
Ed Fitzgerald, one more shot. First, I compliment you, Mr. Mayor, for bringing up your concern, and I also want to compliment my friend here, Carl Schweng, for the access that he's given me in the past, it's been extraordinary, never had a problem. I wish that the time discussion you put on the Wonder Gardens was given to BSU today, it wasn't, and it wasn't because you got diverted from the issue into the question of what your relationship was with the franchise. I remind you, you've had that franchise for 17 years, and you're asking what your relationship is, and you're going to now have an attorney try to determine that for you. I have a problem with Mrs. Vance directing an attorney to this board, I take her as non-supportive to anything I've done, I've actually think her, she's more of an adversary. I'd appreciate the opportunity to cement, to submit three or four or five.
Yeah, Ed, keep this down the center of the lane.
I would like the opportunity to submit three or four attorneys to you for your consideration, you can take Mrs. Vance's also, and I think the attorneys will answer all of your questions for you. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Other members of the public? Hello.
Hello, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Jim Weeks again, and rebuttal to some comments I've heard.
Microphone a little bit?
Okay.
Thank you very much.
There you go. Public access at Weeks Fish Camp property, it's been there for over 70 years, may not be the right term, let's use the term public use. We was promised, as I know it's private property, I was a private citizen and lived out there, I signed on the dotted line because I was told by representative of development, Sugar Mountain, Home Works, Mr. Weeks, do you want to be in the way of a next level marina going into this facility that your grandparents started? And I stood back and said, should I hold off the millions, or should I hold up construction? I signed the dotted line, got what I wanted, to where I can move within a mile of the fish camp and be a part of the fish camp when it opens up, I was promised that I would give that. I spent the last six months down there when it was open, to let the developers know how important this was to me, and I'd just like to say that Sugar Mountain had a sign up when they closed in 2014, I believe, September, Weeks Fish Camp Marina renovations closed one year. We're looking at 2017, and they haven't done anything. Put some sea, a lot of seawalls were started, they started like gamebusters and put seawalls in. Evidently, someone tapped on their shoulder so they could do more money for themselves as opposed to take care of the city of Benita Springs, Lee County, Cuyahoga County, I've had people from Lehigh ask me when it's going to be open again, I just want to rebuttal that. As far as history, that property is valuable to all of us. I know it, I lived it, my family lived it, thank you very much.
Great, thank you. Other members of the public? Please come forward, hello there. Welcome.
Thank you, good afternoon, council and mayor. I'd like to address the item that has to do with the affirmative vote of five or more council members to build more than 75 feet, and I'm not sure exactly when you'll get to this on the agenda, so I just wanted to address this. In the emblem that we have for Benita Springs, it talks about small-town charm, and I'd just like to encourage this city council to continue along those lines of small-time, small-town charm, and I'd like to bring a couple of examples to you, for instance, the Weeks Fish Camp property. I'm not sure what will happen with that, and obviously, nobody else is sure either, but I understand that there is some paperwork that says that there's a possibility of one building being built there for, that would be over 75 feet, but there, there doesn't seem to be any limit to what that might be, so if that's 150 feet or 240 feet is unclear, but I would hope that any ruling on that that would come from this council would limit that as much as absolutely possible. I'd also like to talk about another example, which would be the Raptor Bay Golf Course property. The DRI, the Development of Regional Impact, that was first put into place, and it has been supplemented many times since then, did not include any towers north of Coconut Road. So there's a big difference, I think, that I'd like to point out between the Pelican Landing DRI and the Pelican Landing Community Association, and the DRI, again, had all of the over 75-foot development south of Coconut Road, there was the Hyatt, and there were a number of towers that were approved in that DRI. Now, prior to the year 2000, the highest height that was available to be built in the Raptor Bay property was 75 feet, beyond 2000, that was, that was removed, actually, and that was per the developer's request. So at this point, it should have been that the property for the Raptor Bay did not allow any residential building whatsoever. In the center of that is an exclusion, and that is the Timeshare property, and those are allowed to be 75 feet. There was a 2004 vested right determination that the city attorney produced, and that acknowledged that there were high rises that were available to be built south of Coconut Road, and that was in an area that was identified as Area F, and WCI, at this point, WCI slash Lennar, is trying to build four towers in Raptor Bay, and they're trying to call that Area F-1, and so, that's a little bit of a play on words, I would say. I would just hope that this council would go back to the whole vision of this city as having small-town charm. Thank you.
Wonderful, thank you for your thoughts, thanks for being here. Other members of the public? Hello there, Kathy.
Good afternoon. I was going to wait till the final public comment, but unfortunately, I have to leave, I have to be somewhere, and, you know, I attend all the meetings, I'm certainly not a part of any inner circle, I think all of you all know, I'm not constantly calling or emailing you with suggestions, if I have something to say, I say it here, it's the same thing with staff, I'm not hanging around here trying to pry and find out what's going on, but I just, it's great that not only we have the right to speak, but all of you have a right to speak your own mind, but I am uncomfortable, as you know, as most of you know, when certain comments were made today, so all I want to do, I'm going to keep it short and sweet, and these are my feelings, and I know they're not shared by everybody in this room, but Carl has my complete confidence, I'm 100% behind him, and it's the same thing with John Dolmer, Jay Sweet, and everyone in community development. I certainly wasn't there to hear any comments and all, I do feel, as was expressed by someone else, that perhaps, you know, you feel strongly, so you're going to spit it out and say it, I do it too, but I do think that perhaps it would have been better to do the tongue lashing, so to speak, first privately, and then if you weren't satisfied, come back, but again, 100% confidence and support behind Carl and community development, thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Other members of the public that'd like to speak, please come forward at this time. Hello, welcome.
Hi, thank you.
How are you?
Good, thanks.
Great.
I just have a really quick comment, it seems that there's a consensus among the council that Weeks Fish Camp should be open to the public, and I'm wondering, I think I'm tying in on some other comments, whether it wouldn't be worth considering some sort of an agreement or accord maybe between Benita Springs and Astero to actually purchase the Weeks Fish Camp themselves. I suspect you might have a lot of community support for that, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Other members of the public that'd like to speak? Hello.
Hi.
Welcome.
Thank you. I'm Caroline Kroom from Benita Springs, mayor and city council, thank you very much. So we heard earlier today, I heard a comment during the Weeks discussion, that, that something to the effect of, well, we have buildings in Benita Bay and Pelican Landing, how can we say no to more buildings? And actually, I feel like you can, you have developed, or those developments were planned over 25 years ago, and since that time, we have seen city council members who have come forward and identified visions and plans to enhance the small-town feel, and you have supported the, the land preservation through the purchase of Edison Farms, and I really applaud those efforts that you have made over the years. So now you have a chance to continue affecting that vision by limiting the overbuilding that could take place along the Astero Bay. You have in the logo, "Small-Town Charm, Big Bright Future," and I hope that doesn't have to change to "Small-Town Charm, Big Bright Buildings." I appreciate your consideration for the supermajority vote on a building over 75 feet, and I hope that you move forward with that, thank you.
Wonderful, thank you. Other members of the public? No? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move on to the city attorney's report. Audrey.
Before we get to our city attorney's report, remember, we moved mayor and city council items from the back to the beginning, so I'm going to go to public hearings.
Okay, sure.
Okay. I have a first reading of the following ordinance, this is an ordinance of the city of Benita Springs, setting forth the Parks and Recreation Fee Schedule, providing for conflicts of law, severability, codification, scribbler's errors, inclusion code, and effective date. This is a first reading of the ordinance, the ordinance is tentatively scheduled for your July 5th, 2017 meeting, unless you wish to move it to July 19th, your call on the agenda issue. You have reviewed these fees most recently at your April 19th meeting, where you advised Ms. Perino the fees are appropriate, and this just formalizes that action to make it in effect by October 1.
Great, thank you. Hello.
Hi.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Great.
Nicole Perino, Parks and Recreation Director, for the record, again, just going off what Audrey said, this is just the draft that we brought back, it does have the crossouts of the old fee, the underlining of the new fee, so you can see the differences, but this is the actual draft ordinance.
Okay.
Do you have any questions?
Council, any questions for Nicole? Amy?
My clarification on the concession stand, a change?
Correct.
Where is the concession stand? I, I don't.
It is at the Benita Soccer Complex.
Okay.
And currently, the fee is, is really high, it was higher than everyone else, that's the only fee where, higher than everyone else, so we did put that lower to be in line with everyone else, and that the leagues could actually use it, because currently, they're not using it because they can't afford the fee.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Nicole, I know it's in here somewhere, I just.
Sure.
Where's the non-resident rate for the community, for the gym, so to speak?
The rec center?
The rec center, yeah.
It is listed on page, five of 10.
Okay.
And the non-resident rate is $110 a year, it's going up from 70.
Oh, non-residents, I see it, thank you.
You're welcome.
Council, anything else?
Yeah, I had a question. It was brought up about the tennis court fees for, is that just for rent, reservation of a tennis court?
Correct.
Okay, so if somebody just walked up, there's nobody on it, they can go play, they don't have to pay a fee to play?
All of our facilities will continue at first come, first served, unless you wanted rent it a specific day and time.
Okay, because I, I know that was brought up on a previous, yeah, thanks.
Okay, council, anything else?
I'll move it to second reading.
Okay, there's been a motion, is there a second? Motion and a second, further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Duitt?
Aye.
Councilman Slack?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman O'Flynn?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Karamba?
Aye.
Okay.
I think we have an ordinance, second reading and public hearing of the following ordinance, this is an amendment to Benita Springs Land Development Code, Chapter 3, Development Standards, revising architectural standards for non-residential buildings, amending Section 3-488, alternate design, Section 3-489, building design standards, Section 3-490, design standards for specific building types, Section 3-491, site design standards, Section 3-492, exceptions and interpretations, providing for conflicts of law, severability, codification, scribbler's error, inclusion code, and effective date. This is the second reading, the affidavit publication has been reviewed and on file the city clerk, and is sufficient. We've gone over these changes before, as well as the local planning agency who agreed with the ordinance, if you, and has found it consistent with the comp plan, there's a summary of the ordinance on the second page of the green sheet, but if you wish to ask any particular questions, let us know.
Okay, council?
Yeah, I had a question on the green sheet, it says, when talking about the maximum of two primary facades were eliminated, with changes to accommodate the potential infill building where all four sides must be treated as primary facades, are you talking about the building that's going to be built as infill needs to have all four sides? Are you talking about a building that, you know, needs to have all four sides because there might be a potential of infill down the road?
I'm talking about infill where the condition would require all four sides could be primary facades.
But, but that's for the infill building and not?
Correct.
Okay, not for the existing building.
Not for something that may or may not happen. Correct.
Okay, and the other question, it looks like we're going to ask for more screening on generators, things like that. Now, I notice like we have a generator right out front that's very visible, you know, so, you know, if we're asking others to do this, shouldn't we kind of set the example? Okay. Yeah, we have one right out here, that's not very well screened.
I thought you were talking about your personal, but you're talking about the city hall.
City hall, yeah.
Okay, council?
Move to approve?
Public comment?
Yes, Amy.
We need public comment.
Yeah, no, there's been a motion and a second, okay, further discussion? Okay, public comment, there we go, Michael. Red Sox are in first place by a half game, by the way, for the moment.
I think their game starts in about an hour.
That's right, it's getaway day.
Yeah, that's right. Thank you, Mayor, and, and council, if you could, please pull up the PowerPoint presentation that says Development Standards, second from the top. I touched on this issue at the last meeting about putting in some language that, that clarifies how the, the proposed new standards as it relates to overhead doors and, and more, determine what our primary facades and what you're going to do to require either fencing or, or other screening in the form of landscaping, and, and I, when I, when I read through this, there, there seems to me to be too much openness and openness to interpretation as it pertains to the word visible, because that word is constantly referenced throughout the statutes, I think we need some standards as to what is deemed visible as it pertains to abutting residential areas or, or vacant future residential development, as well as how we treat existing parks that are master-planned, that are more than 50% built out, that have overhead doors, that have industrial buildings in them, and how do we treat the remaining lands that are to be built. So I sent this along to staff last week at our last meeting, you know, I talked to John, and he said, come up with some language that we can talk and banter about, and I came up with some language that, that set forth rules as to how you determine what is visible and what is not. So the first paragraph deals with specifically overhead doors facing residential property or property that could be used as residential in the future, and for a location, if it's a single-family home residential development, it would be the property line of the closest dwelling unit, and if it was multifamily, it would be the, the nearest facade of that apartment building or condo building, and then from a height standpoint, it would be at 6 feet, and if it's a, an existing residential development, it would be at 90% of the proposed overhead door height, and, and John asked, where did I get that 90% from? And that's right from the screening requirements that are on page 11. And then I talked about how, how you would determine what is visible for drop-off locations, service doors, dumpsters, loading docks, generators, all the, the remaining stuff that's in there, and it, and it follows it very similarly, but. And it follows it very similarly, but rather than putting the 90% of the proposed overhead door height, I just left it at 6 feet. And John came back and said, "Mike, you know, I don't know if that works, because, you know, the, we could have apartment buildings or condo developments or residential units that are multi-story." And I said, "John, I get it. You know, if it's existing and there's a second-floor unit or a third-floor unit, you take it from the highest window or midpoint of that window, and you look down, and if you can see it, it's visible. I get it." And I think that's something that we can work with staff to clarify, but I think we need to have some sort of rules to abide as we go through this process to determine what is visible and what's not. And it should be to the naked eye.
Ordinary eyesight opposed to naked eye?
Sure. Ordinary eyesight with corrective lenses? I got it, I got it, yeah.
2020 Vision?
Yeah. The second item that I want to deal with is because they're changing the term on page three and facade standards, because they're changing it from a maximum of two facades to a minimum of two facades, this is what triggered my thinking with respect to specifically the Burnwood Business Park. The way that this statute reads is, is it says that if an overhead door faces a road that can be accessed by the public, you have to go through these and follow these screening requirements. The problem is, is that at Burnwood Business Park, we have reverse frontage roads with multiple buildings that have overhead doors that face the reverse frontage road, and the way that the statute reads is that it would increase the amount of screening that's already in place. We have a landscape buffer already in place. If we were to develop the future land, and I'll show you kind of where, how do I hit that? There it is. So these buildings here all have overhead doors that face the reverse frontage road. These Brookwood buildings back here have overhead doors that face the cul-de-sac. This building here has overhead doors that don't necessarily face, but they're viewable and visible from the reverse frontage road. This is an industrial park, and there's going to be buildings with overhead doors. The issue I have is all the remaining vacant land that we have left to build, in which we will have a reverse frontage road. Do we really want to have, or is it reasonable for the citizens of Benita to expect that when they're driving through an industrial park, that for half of it, it's okay to see the overhead doors, even though there's palm trees, and there's hedge rows, and there's setbacks, and there's grass, and there's landscape lighting, and there's architectural details to shield it? But if you read this statute, if somebody would put in a 12-foot overhead door, they'd have to put up a 10-foot wall along the reverse frontage road behind the building so that you didn't see any of the overhead doors. Or that you would have to add excess landscaping in the terms, if it's 75% opacity, would be something that would double or triple the landscape requirements that are in place now. So the request is to have for existing parks, and this is very narrow request, it's for existing parks, master-planned parks, that are more than 50% built out, that are zoned industrial, that they have to just follow the rules that are already in place and have been in place for some time. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mike. Others? Hello?
Good afternoon, good to see you again. For the record, I'm Stan Stoudt, I'm here as a citizen or a property owner of Benita Springs. I'm addressing the master concept plans, excuse me, yes, the architecture. The permitting process has the ability to ladle a property owner with excessive buffering. And if you were to approve this architectural plan, then I would ask that if there is excessive buffering and additional architectural, you seem to be redundant, you're double taxing the property and the ability of the property to support that. So I would ask that you consider, as Mr. Maurer did, that if you have buffering that achieves ostensibly the same result, that buffering be considered in regards to this ordinance if it gets permitted. On a specific basis, you probably don't recall, but I own 27971 Oakland Drive, and you may or may not recall that on the north border of my property and the east border of my property, there are now residential uses. Those residential uses are permitted non-conforming. It has been the city's desire for those uses to expire by attrition. If I were to go ahead and this ordinance were to pass, I would basically being, would be asked, because I'm residential-facing on two sides, to create architectural relief for uses that are expiring. Furthermore, the residential use on the north end of my property is under a floodway, so as those uses die off by attrition, there will not be any buildings there because of the floodway. So I would ask that you consider this ordinance be revised so that those types of uses where you have inordinate circumstances with expiring residential facing be considered. In my particular property, I have a south face and a east face that are customer-facing, and I would be fully supportive of an ordinance that would, because I'm going to do that architectural relief anyway, because I think it's what the capital markets would describe as being viable. So this ordinance adds additional burdens on top of burdens that are already there, such as buffering and excessive buffering. This ordinance creates problems, not only in the example that Mr. Maurer had represented, but also in the example where we have uses that are transitory and non-complying in existence at this time. So I would ask that you consider those factors in the weighing of this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Other members of the public? Okay, seeing none, we've had a motion, a second. Public comment, Audrey?
Just direction whether to modify, I would modify on page 3, 3-489 and page 15, 3-490 to add in a visibility requirement for ordinary eyesight so that there's additional clarification. Otherwise, you can just provide instructions to staff how to process.
I was going to say, and you brought that up, so what, right? I mean, I.
I'm just asking whether you want what the public comment had stated, or if you, I can put it in those two sections. Alternatively, you can just provide directions to staff to use common sense.
I'd like to incorporate the public comment.
Okay, great. Okay. Fred?
I don't have a problem with the things that are non-conforming or going to go out, you know. I think, and I think most of what Mr. Maurer said I would agree with, I think, though, instead of 90%, I think that .9 should just not be in there. If you can see that the garage door, at all the conditions he said, then it's got to have some kind of screen to cover it, landscaping or whatever. Because I don't, you don't want to see a whole bunch of tops of garage doors. That would be, that'd almost be as bad as seeing the door itself. Other than that, I don't have a problem with it. I think Mr. Dolmer may have some points.
Please don't make me determine 90%. That's all I ask. Because what is 90%? And it's going to get very difficult to calculate that. I think that Mr. Maurer's definition of location is fine. I have no problems with that. I think the height is where I have a little bit of an issue, but I think that for vacant property, we start looking at maybe 80% of the maximum allowable height is where you measure from.
Right.
And at least that kind of gets us anticipating what could be there, but doesn't take it all the way to the maximum height.
Right.
But that's up to counsel.
Can I ask, how much flexibility have you built in to the point that Stan made? How much flexibility do you have so, you know, when the time comes, residents across the street, are they there, will they go, et cetera, in dealing with it?
Part of that is a timing issue, but I'll take that aside, because to answer the question directly, he has a requirement in his zoning that will institute an opaque buffer between his property and the property to the north, as long as it remains residential. And once that property converts to a non-residential use, into a use that the city intends to have in that location, his buffering requirements revert back to that required in the Land Development Code. Currently, or in the short term, prior to redevelopment, he has a 6-foot wall and extensive vegetation that will be there. I don't think there will be visibility between those two properties. So I don't know, to be honest with you, I'd have to look to see what type of flexibility from a facade or architectural standpoint we would have. I don't know if we directly addressed it, I would need to do the research, but if, from a practical standpoint, I don't think a building that he constructs would be visible next door, at least with the enhanced landscaping.
Okay.
And just back to, sorry, Fred.
Excuse me.
No, just back to the flexibility point. So, I mean, do you have the ability, in what you're doing as things evolve, to be flexible enough to take care of realistic concerns? I guess it's a definition of realistic, but, yeah.
And I also think it concerns, yes. She actually brought up what I was about to say. We do have an alternate design process, which is available to an applicant. However, what has been considered to this point is to increase the architectural design, to get away from Hollywood sets, and to go to better-designed buildings.
Right.
And so, when that's our focus, the flexibility is there. If you want to back off of those standards, through whatever, obviously, when you feel that way, it's always a common sense argument, that is not necessarily there unless you want to take that alternate design process.
So that would come back to counsel and affect as part of it or whatever? Or could it?
That's what I was going to say. Is it going to be ours?
But that would be.
Do we want to take that away?
No, no, I'm just saying, I'm trying to figure out flexibility here.
That is approved through a permit with the city architect.
Okay.
Okay. Fred?
One last question. I think Mr. Maurer was talking about this, this big concern was areas that were designated as industrial parks, not a mixed use of light industrial, commercial, and all that stuff, right?
It is, and he makes a good point, and to address that point is difficult or harder to do than identifying it. Because what you, what I think common sense would dictate is, driving through an industrial park, there could be times where you see an overhead door.
Right.
And I don't think anybody would be offended driving through an industrial park and seeing an overhead door. Where I think we run into a little bit of difficulty is the fact that a lot of these industrial parks, or pseudo-industrial parks, are in close proximity to residential uses. And while I don't necessarily have a problem when they're internally visible, externally visible seems to go against the intent of this ordinance.
Okay. Counsel, anything else? Okay. Yep. Okay, roll call.
With the changes, correct?
Yeah.
As Mike put it.
Councilman Slakta?
Aye.
Sorry, I had more conversation.
Oh, okay.
So what are we voting on?
We did make, we did get rid of the .9, didn't we, on the doors?
Right.
What I'm a little confused about is, Mike Maurer made some points, John said, "Some of them I see, some of them I don't see." He seemed to indicate a middle ground. Are we voting on that middle ground?
What I would suggest, and I guess that's up to the counsel to determine, but accepting the definition that Mr. Maurer presented for location, and that is listed as number one in the first paragraph, I think that height, as he's proposed in item two, should be better defined as the upper-story window or 80% of the maximum height would be my suggestion as a middle ground. And then for his comment on the visibility of overhead doors, I think that can be something that we would accept internally to a park or a development, but I think it would be something that we would still want to prohibit being visible from adjacent residential uses.
What's adjacent?
Adjacent would mean anything that's basically visible. That goes back to our visible discussion.
With this.
With the naked eye.
Corrected eye.
The corrected eye.
Ordinary eyesight.
If one of us stands on the property, is it visible or not?
Is there, well, I guess there's a motion, but I'd like to go with this kind of sensible middle ground that staff is recommending.
I would, too.
Mike made the.
I can withdraw my motion, we can restate it, or whatever you want.
Why don't we withdraw and restate, so we're clear?
Okay.
It would be to approve the ordinance, but make the changes inserting in Sections 3-489,
as well as Sections 3-490, the provisions as to visibility as just read to you by Mr. Dolmer, and he'll provide me with the language so I can.
I'd make a motion to that effect.
Okay, it's been a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second, motion and a second, further discussion?
Also, we're going to put in there about the flexibility that the other public comment was made.
Yeah, I'm a little confused about that.
Do we already have that? Is that what you're saying, John?
We already have alternate design provisions.
All right, never mind. Great. Roll call, please.
Councilman Slakta?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman O'Flynn?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Corumba?
Aye.
Councilman Duitt?
Aye.
Okay.
Okay, so I have second reading and public hearing of the following ordinances. This one's interesting, because this is the one I refer to, pick either from menu A or from menu B. This is, I'll read both title blocks and to the record, this has been published in the Fort Myers News Press. I have a copy of the affidavit of publication, which is on file with the city clerk, and is sufficient. I'll read the title block. This is an amendment to the Benita Springs Land Development Code, Chapter 4, Zoning, Amending Section 4-303, Duration of Rights Confirmed by Adopted Master Concept Plan, Clarifying the Intent That Community Development Director May Obtain Additional Information During Applications for reinstatements and Extensions of Master Concept Plans, Providing for Conflicts of Law, Severability, Codification, Scrivener's Errors, Inclusion Code, and Effective Date. Or, the next ordinance, An Amendment to the Benita Springs Land Development Code, Chapter 4, Zoning, Amending Section 4-303, Duration of Rights Confirmed by Adopted Master Concept Plans, Prohibiting Applications of reinstatement of Expired Master Concept Plans, Providing for Conflicts of Law, Severability, Codification, Scrivener's Errors, Inclusion Code, and an Effective Date. This is the second public, second reading and public hearing on the ordinance. I do want to make it clear, we do have an application pending, and that application will continue to be processed until conclusion, regardless of what the city council's actions on this. I do want to point out to you, I just received it, only on executive order extensions, as to if city council prohibits the reinstatement, and I've mentioned this before, since this is one of those holdovers from Lee County, this particular process of allowing the reinstatements, it made sense at one time. Now I'm not sure it still makes sense, because, one, we want to have ascertained what is out there, and sometimes you just don't know, because people change their minds, or people will come up with something that's very old and say, "Hey, I want to have these same rights that I had," even though I didn't abandon them, but I ignored them or neglected them. That's one issue. The second one is, State Statute 252.362 was amended years back, and it allows extensions, state emergency extensions for emergencies. I just received a memorandum from Jackie Gensen at noon time that has for three events. For Hurricane Matthew, it's currently 232 days that we need to provide people with that extension if they so request. With the Zika virus, 235 days, and wildfires, which are still ongoing, 119 days. So with that being said, we don't know what the hurricane season is going to bring us. There may be a few, couple floods, depends, usually the governor's office is very good at limiting them, but sometimes you get a statewide emergency. So, I mean, they can easily amass more than one year, you know, to extend by going through these extension processes. And that's what the point I'm raising is to the date. Again, your choice, counsel.
Okay.
Which is, which is the one, Audrey, that prohibits new reinstatements?
I believe it would be the second ordinance, it's second title block, yes. So, if you see, there's a pink sheet.
Pink sheet?
Yes, I separated the documents via a sheet, because.
I'd make a motion to approve that one, wherever it's located.
I'll second it.
It's been a motion and a second?
Public.
Further discussion? Okay. Public comment? Seeing none? Audrey, anything else? Roll call, please.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman O'Flynn?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?[1721.88]
Councilman Dewitt?
Aye.
Councilman Slacta?
Aye.
Mayor?
Yes, Fred?
I'd like to ask Audrey a question. Audrey, I remember in what was an interesting episode for, by the, the homeless shelter thing? Wouldn't this application you have on file, wouldn't it be caught up in the fact that we were working on this? When, when was it submitted? Before this all started and became public?
You're talking about the homeless shelter from like two thousand and-
No, no, this applica-, you made the comment, there was an application?
That's Angler's Paradise.
Yeah.
And I don't know what day they actually submitted the application.
But if it was after this was made notice, that we were working on?
It was not.
Oh.
It was significantly before. It was actually during review of the process, that we discovered the floating sentence, brought the first ordinance, because I had some other ordinances.
Thank you.
I'd just like to make a general comment, because I think that there are other areas where we need to look into grandfathering some applications that come in through community development. Because I think, if you look at the reports that we get weekly, you'll see what things that are on there from two thousand and twelve. And if they, and, and my personal opinion is, if we could, we should just wipe those applications off of our list, and, and not have them be eligible for us to maintain them, because we don't know what's going on.
Now, remember, if they do, if they do some of the work, then it vests.
Right. But these people, these applications, there isn't any work-
Correct.
-on them. So, I think we need to clarify our own record, so we know what we're looking at and what we're not looking at. Because we don't have to keep monitoring it for the next twenty years. And this is, I'm very glad that we chose the second one here.
Okay, great.
Okay. Well, John, can you look into that with Audrey, the point that councilwoman's making?
And I wanna point out, we are, right now, special counsel is creating a list of where we have done carryover, where it is not legally necessary to have things in, or it's a quirk in the process that doesn't necessarily fit Benita Springs culture. So, we have a very large, I hate to say bureaucratic, but it's a very large land development code, chapter four. We did try to bring, and I think it was oh eight, a different chapter four, the citizens didn't like that one.
Right.
We, we have modified it to just basically state the name Benita instead of Lee County, and fit a few things, and then tweaking it, this would be delete, you know, do some wholesale deleting, and that is a project that's being worked on right now as we speak.
Thanks.
I'm, to item C, which is an amendment to the Benita Springs Land Development Code, chapter four, amending section four dash fifty-three, functions and authority of city council, requiring an affirmative vote of five or more council members for a decision by city council to amend the comprehensive plan specifically related to building heights over seventy-five feet for applications received after a specified date, providing for conflicts of law, severability, codification, squirmers, errors, inclusion in code and effective date. This is the second public hearing, I reviewed the affidavit of publication, and it is legally sufficient. Council, we've had multiple conversations on it, I believe the ordinance, which has not changed since March twentieth, is what council intends, which is strictly the height, there's no density, and strictly when it's in the comprehensive plan issue.
Amy?
I propose this ordinance, so I'm definitely in favor of it. I think that this is something that ratifies our small-town charm, big bright future, and that, as the community has spoken more, many, many, many times, so this is reinforcing our view in regard to what we want our community to be. And I think that we should, even though in the past, I don't think it would have been operated, operative, because we've had more than five council people vote on heights over seventy-five feet, I think it would, might make us think more than, you know, a little more carefully, though we should think carefully all, no matter what. In addition, I do think that it is reinforcing our vision there in a very definitive way, so I would like to see this passed.
Second motion.
Okay. It's been a motion and a second, council, further discussion? And some public comment? Seeing none? Audrey, you're good?
I'm fine, if council's fine.
Okay. All right, roll call, please.
Councilman O'Flynn?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Karumba?
Aye.
Councilman Dewitt?
Aye.
Councilman Slacta?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
I thank you. The next ordinance, which I do anticipate public comment, is an ordinance of the city of Benita Springs, Florida, declaring a temporary moratorium related to the Benita Beach Road Visioning Study and Quadrant Study in the Comprehensive Plan Amendment, approved May third, two thousand and seventeen, as ordinance number seventeen dash oh six, establishing a moratorium on the processing of any zoning or other community development applications within the Benita Beach Road Quadrant map, or Benita Beach Road Corridor Area Network Zone map, providing for severability and effective date. This is the second public hearing, the ordinance had its first public hearing on June seventh, two thousand and seventeen, at that time advising that we needed to look at some different sections and processes. So, if you go to your errata sheet, you'll see that, I believe it's errata sheet number three, and I do wanna apologize not getting it done till five o'clock last night. So, I apologize also to the city clerk for getting it so late. The changes are underlined, as new language. I tried to put a lot of different relief valves, because there are different circumstances where relief is warranted. For example, if it's a development order, and consistent with discussion today, council can provide staff direction, either through this ordinance or through approval of zoning or site plans that come up in the future, if you're okay with it, everything still keeps going forward. Same thing as, same sentence was added as to the abeyance, except when you provide us direction to the alternative. There was a different definition for, one of the concerns I had was the city manager advised, he kept getting phone calls, that people thought we were gonna apply this to their water tanks, or their COP permits. So, being very careful, development permit excludes building permit requirements, now that could be a chapter three, and we don't want that to happen. So, it's of the Florida Building Code, or technical codes such as HVAC, fire, mechanical, plumbing, or life safety. Later on, we get into like use issues, and that would be like COPs. The big kicker that for most of the people here, is a change in section H on page five, that if the zoning ordinance has a condition requiring compliance with the Benita Beach Road Visioning Study, or will be approved with such condition, the development may continue to be processed. If with council's permission, those that I have reviewed that have conditions like that, and I will go back to Benita Breeze and make sure we do have a condition that's very specific to that, if I have not put that in already, are Mr. Stoudt's property, Horizon Park CPD, Oak, or I'm sorry, his was Oakland, Horizon Park CPD, Benita Breeze, which has gone through the zoning, and Hidden Lakes, which is in the process of going through the zoning. So, if council gives me that permission today to send out that letter, I would appreciate it. And also making it clear, if there's no direct relationship with the visioning study or the quadrant study, council can continue going forward, such as if it's interior remodeling of an existing structure or a COP permit, something that I don't think was discussed in the comp plan amendments whatsoever. There are some developments I do wanna specifically locate in here. Sections one and two were lands in which we have statutory development agreements, and the statute actually says unless you hold a specific public hearing to make your laws that were adopted after the development agreement go into effect, you need to have a public hearing, you need to make certain requisite findings as the city council, and I don't think that's the intent. The lands that I refer to as sections one and two are your lands in the farthest eastern, sorry, I have to, eastern boundaries on the map over there. And then Burnwood Park of Commerce, as it relates to the building placement closest to Benita Beach Road. The other changes to the ordinance is, we removed the forty-five days from the effective date of the ordinance, and that limited the time to appeal. This requires that throughout the duration of the moratorium, they need to come to city council first, city council makes the call, rather than filing in court after the forty-five day deadline, as this continues. It's just a way to reduce litigation, if possible. After the last meeting, I added on page seven, and schedule within twenty days for city council to make the decision. So, instead of it being, Mr. Barachi had brought up the point, or raised the point, that he thought there was a sunshine law with the delegation and a de facto, even though it's not specifically in the ordinance. Mr. Theriaque and I discussed and said, we'll just schedule it to council, and you guys can hear it out at that point. Those are the changes. I think there's a good process in this ordinance, it's probably our most thorough moratorium we've drafted to date. So, council's call after public.
Great. Thank you, Audrey. Mike?
Well, I'd like to make a, a motion to approve, but also to exempt the Benita Exchange and the Burnwood properties.
I'll second it.
Okay, discussion, Fred?
Yeah, I'd have to object just that flat. I think, I think that if we would deal with this, first of all, we, we, there's another part of Burnwood Commerce, which Mr. McGarvey has purchased, it's a little bit simpler, we deal with that, and then we deal with Benita Exchange, and I think, I think it can be worked out, but I think there needs to be some adjustments, and I think Mr. Domer could help make a presentation on. But generally, it would get approved, but it wouldn't be a carte blanche, so to speak.
There's been a motion and a second. John?
I'm just here to help out as requested.
Yeah, okay. Council, anything for John?
Well, I believe they have PDs, DOs, you know, things are in place, we've, we've already approved certain things already.
Yes.
You know, we, we don't wanna be holding them up, they have other retailers that are looking to purchase, looking to build, we, we don't wanna scare away anybody from coming into our city. And, like I said, we've already approved, especially Benita Exchange, you know, we like their concept, we like their idea, and, and now we're saying, well, you know, the moratorium's gonna affect you guys. So, and I just don't think that's fair.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
If the lawsuit hadn't been filed over on the other side of town, nowhere near this, would they have been subject to this? Would they have been subject to the comprehensive plan?
After the effective date, yes, sir.
Yeah. Okay.
They would be.
Fred?
So-
I'm sorry, Peter, I'm sorry. Hang on, Fred, I'm sorry, I thought Pete was done, sorry.
I think there's, I think there's only one really.
Fred, 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 Pete's finishing up, I'm sorry, my mistake.
So, but for the serendipity of that lawsuit being filed, which has nothing to do with these properties, there would have been a process in place where all these properties, as appropriate, would have come through, and you would have applied what we adopted.
Correct. There would be some differences depending on what was shown on the master concept plans. For those plans that were more specific with buildings, in specific locations, where council blessed them in a particular portion-
There would have been-
There would not have been a question. For those that did not have a location, or a deviation, or a statement stating they did not need to follow it, those would be subject to.
Right. So, what's being suggested here as the process essentially puts them in the same position as they would have been had that, or if not better, than if that lawsuit had not been filed, is that correct?
As I understand the current draft, there is no difference between this moratorium and had they been under strictly the comprehensive plan amendment.
Right.
But the problem being the moratorium itself, the M-word.
Correct. Now, now, if there's, if there is a different process, if there is a question as to their consistency with that.
And, they have active master concept plans, so it's not like we're dealing with an expired master concept plan. So, things that have either gone to development order, or ineminently are, and it's consistent with the master concept plan, if you had the comp plan in place, you would not be saying, no, you have to reconfigure because you have-
Well, this goes back to what I was saying, when they have, when there's buildings on a master concept plan that have been specifically approved, that is correct. If there is a simple lot creation, and nothing has been shown on that lot, it would be subject to the, the regulations at the time they come in for development.
So, let's use the example of the apartment complex in the rear of, would that be something that has already received the development order?
No.
And would that be something that, it's not being open, it's not being gated? I mean, I'm sorry, it is being gated.
Correct, it is. And that statement is why I think that you could separate them from, or exempt them from this moratorium, but this gets off, off track a little bit.
Yeah, I'm just trying to stay on what I was talking about, which is, I'm trying to understand a simple point, that, let's say that lawsuit on the other side of town had not been filed, does this, so everyone who may come up, who was not here, who wouldn't have come up, would have been subject to that, meaning the comp plan change, on its terms, condition, consistent with the facts of their situation. It might, there might have been parts where it applied, it might have been parts where it didn't apply, but as, as adopted, it would have fit, all right? So, does this, I mean, the word moratorium on it, but I'm focusing more on the process point to get out, all right, is that, I think I hear you saying, this is no less burdensome than what would have been in place with respect to these other properties, if that other lawsuit hadn't been filed?
Yes, but I would like to add one comment to the end of that to clarify. In terms of the submittal of an application in the initial review, you're, you are correct.
Right.
There is no change. What is different is what I just identified before. If there is a determination of, of nonconsistency, as opposed to, to more of the administrative process, we would look at an appeal coming to council for your determination as to whether, one, something should be excluded, or two, whether they actually are consistent and the interpretation was wrong.
So, that's a faster track than what otherwise would have been in place?
It is drawn up that way. How it plays out, I would assume, would be consistent with that, but there's a lot of players involved, and without making any guarantees before everyone has comments in. Okay?
All right. So, my only, my only, considering all that advice, there weren't exemptions from the comprehensive plan that we adopted. We've got a process that's intended, and darn well better be as fast-tracked as what was intended with the comp plan. So, my kinda rhetorical question is, why are we creating separate exemptions, except for these ones Audrey's pointed out here?
Well, then why do we have to do it for them?
Just, just, sorry, ju, hang on a second. Just because somebody else, unrelated to anybody else, happened to file some lawsuit? The reason it's done for the one is just a question of technicality under the law. In other words, I think it was Mr. Bassinet sent a letter in to Audrey, with a specific statutory application that Audrey agreed with, and David Theriaque agreed with as well. So, that's why that's narrowly in there. And the only other ones in there is because Fred made the motion last time with respect to the frontage on the other property. It just seems to me like we're redoing a whole discussion that is serendipitously arising because somebody on the other side of town filed some lawsuit.
Okay. Fred?
And Mr. Domer and I have had several discussions on this, as well as the other project, which is, I think needs to be looked at as well, in a favorable light, and that's the one Mr. McGarvey's doing. But, on this one, I think it came down to that John felt that if, A, you excluded the, that multifamily, because it's so far back, and also, they don't want, they want to not have their coffee shop and their hamburger building right up at the road, they want parking in front of it. Now, if you look at what's out there, including the artichoke, there's parking in front of those buildings, actually even Culber's, there's parking that goes out past the building to the road. What, what, what Benita Exchange wants to currently do is out in front of that building, they want two complete parking lots. In other words, parking up against a building, an aisleway, parking, parking beyond that, another aisleway, another parking. I think if you reduce that to what's mostly on Benita Beach Road where we're talking about, one row of parking, one aisleway, one row of parking against a building, that would be a little more in the spirit of the vision, but it wouldn't wreck their plan, and they could put additional parking in, in the, in the back as well. So, that would be my, my thought on it, for whatever's worth.
Okay. Council, anything else? Greg?
I, I would be, I'd be, be in favor of that, like Fred just said, and exempting Benita Exchange if they do it that way. I mean, 'cause at the end of the day, if we take Benita Exchange out of it, and they come back to us in an appeals process, that's what we're gonna say to them anyway. Hey, here's what you've got, here's what you want, just like we did with the one across the street, or in front of Hundreds Ridge, this is what they originally wanted, we made some concessions to make them look like the same row as what's down the road, it's what they're gonna get anyway, if they're on this council.
Fred, you're talking about frontage only?
Yes.
Just a front point?
Yeah.
So, it'd be the same language as exists for? Yeah, it would, it would make it consistent with what's already there.
What's already there.
Amy?
I have a problem with the process that we're going through here right now with these exemptions, against exemptions. I know we have some special cases in here, because we should be dealing with these exemptions in a zoning case, when they bring to us and ask for that. We, you know, we can't have a zoning meeting here when we're doing a moratorium. If there are some technical reasons, which I agree that you presented, that, that's okay, and we did give a partial exemption to Burnwood Park Commerce, because we had And we did give a partial exemption to Burnwood Park Commerce because we had already done it with the adjacent property. But even that, even that, I think is inappropriate, and that's why, when we talked about this the first time, I said, "We need to have some outs because we don't want to stop this development application process." And I think the outs that you presented are fair. Because it will paralyze us to get our project done here along Benita Beach Road. If we don't have something like the ordinance that was passed, active, and it's not going to be active until we get through the case that was put before us. So, I think we need to come to a compromise permission. As written, I think I'd be in favor of it. I don't want to put any more exemptions in. If we want to have a separate, I don't know if we can do this, Audrey, but in the future, if there's a specific case, let's present it to the council as a case, we hear both sides, and then we could do it on a case-by-case basis. But we can't decide that here. I don't know what Fred's talking about, I don't know what anybody else is talking about, about any of these other things, because I don't have the details of it. I hear the names, but I don't know what it means. And they, I think developers know sort of what the, where we're going with this. We're not going to, we're going to be reasonable, you know, because that's what council wants to do. You know, we're not, we're not too crazy here. But I'm against this, it's just inappropriate in this venue. This is a moratorium, you know, and the reason we're doing this is because we can't implement an ordinance which we already passed.
And nothing precludes a developer from coming back next week, providing a sufficient and complete application, and which we will schedule to you so you can actually review it under separate cover and give a yea or nay. It wouldn't be a zoning case because they've already got their zoning, but it would be something where you would provide that direction. So, we have that relief mechanism in there. It's very clear spelled, clearly spelled out. It's consistent with, actually, US law, because the case did go farther than just Florida. So, I mean, there is a system in there. I just, the only other thing I would ask is a little clarification on Burnwood Park, if we're going to keep it in or add that additional language that was suggested by Mr. Forbes as far as the portion geographic...
Is, wait a second, is that, what a council member...
I think, Audrey, that we should not introduce any other things, you know, because the Benita Beach vision has more things than just the frontage, all right? So, are we going to just pick on each one and then have an exemption on it when we don't have a full picture of what we're talking about? I don't think that's proper. But I think the council should be receptive to individual developers who say, "This aspect of the Benita Beach Road ordinance, which was passed and is on hold for now, we don't want to apply, you know, abide by it for X, Y, and Z reason," and then we'll talk about it. Because even what you're saying, I don't know, I don't know how to evaluate that.
And, and that's fine. What I want to make sure then, again, it depends on the vote there, just because, and also you need to hear from the public, the ordinance would be as written, but also obtain authorization to send the four letters out that they're okay.
And those four letters are the ones that have an undertaking in them to abide by the Beach Road comprehensive plan?
Exactly. They have a commitment.
Fred?
Yeah, let me make two comments here. The reason I think that we would want to consider doing this for Benita Exchange is they're in the process of getting two prime national tenants in and kind of almost at a go-no-go, and if we do this, that might, I can't, no one can read the future, might kill the deal. I personally think that it would be fine to do it. And on the McGarvey thing, I've met with him, I've looked at their plans, and they're, they're good, and it's back from the road. My gosh, it's way, way back.
I think the point Amy's making, which is you've met with them...
I understand that. I make a motion, we do it with those two exceptions as previously described, and let's put it to a vote.
We already had the motion in it. Mike already made it and said that.
What's the, what motion are we working on?
This with the additional ones of Burnwood and Benita Exchange. That's what the motion was.
Just want to be clear, is there anything different than what the original motion was?
No, no, that's...
I didn't think so, right.
I didn't realize, I forgot to write it down.
Earlier we had that, I just wanted to make clear.
So, the original motion related to the setbacks only?
No, he said exception.
Let's withdraw and rephrase, just to be clear.
Well, no, I don't, I...
Well, that's, I'm sorry, Mike.
I'd rather, I'd rather talk through this than, than to withdraw. And I would also like to hear from the, the public before, before anything anyway. But, I mean, the, the main point here is, we've already approved things, you know, for both of them, and we were fine with the vision then. The, the main thing is the moratorium and the look of a moratorium as far as attracting national retailers to come in. You know, the, the M-word's going to scare people off, and that's, that's the main thing. I, I don't want, you know, I take your point that this would already be ineffective if it wasn't for the lawsuit. But the problem is, having the moratorium is the problem. So, it's not that they, they were going to go through this, and they were fine with going through this because they would bring it to us. But the moratorium puts extra layers on to push things back and slow things down, and businesses don't like to be slowed down.
Right, so I, I...
But, so that's my main point, is as long as the public is happy with, you know, being able to come forward, things going as they would have without the moratorium, then I would be fine with that. But that is my main holdup, is the moratorium and the look to the business community at large.
And so, to, to, to add, just to pile on a little bit to that, I mean, we had this half an hour, forty-five minute long discussion this morning about being able to fix it, being able to sell, because timing was of the essence. So, I think that's where Mike's coming from, is that if there's a moratorium and they've got to jump through more hoops to come before us to get their project done, it's going to scare people away.
So, I am then totally confused, all right? Because I thought it was clear in the conversation about fifteen minutes ago that this would put them in no worse a position than they would have been in time-wise, substantive-wise, in every way, had the comp plan not be stayed. I see, yeah, so, so if that's not the case, I would amend the process so they'd be put in that position.
And I think what you will hear is a situation where several landowners are pretty sure that what they're proposing is not going to be something that Tool Design considers consistent with that vision. And I think that's, and I don't want to put words in their mouth, but...
Would Tool Design have been looking at that if the lawsuit had not stayed the comp plan? Yes?
Yes.
So, all I'm getting at, Mike, is you're saying, and Greg is both saying, in effect, we're piling on delay after delay after delay. If that's correct, I agree with you, but I think that's, that's wrong. Because at least what I'm insisting and what I'm hearing from staff is that this process be at least as streamlined as it would have been, and no more substant, no more substantively, to use the word onerous, as it would have been. And I agree with Amy that, I mean, this kind of spot thing, I mean, there are, there are, you got a slippery slope here. What about people who are not here, who haven't talked to individual council members? Where are they?
But what we're saying here, if we, if we don't, if we start exempting all, all these people, and it doesn't mean that should they come before council, we're going to be negative about, against their appeal, is we might as well repeal the ordinance to follow the Benita Beach Road vision study. That's what they're asking us to do, because we have that mechanism, trying to get that mechanism in place, and most of these entities that are coming forward say they agree with it. But there might be one little aspect of it that they can't, they don't want to comply with, or they would find it very difficult to comply with, and that's why they have to come to council with us. But we can't debate these things here. We're not capable of doing, we don't have the information. So, that's what these calls for exemptions are, basically, is they're not going to comply without ordinance. They don't want to abide by the ordinance. That's why they're asking for it.
Well, I think some of it is, though, going back to kind of what Councilman Flynn said, where are the other ones out here? Well, I think the ones that are here have, they've, they got MPDs, they got these planned developments. They're, some of them are more than fifty percent built out, so they're just looking to stay consistent with what they have. Let's go with the one, maybe there's somebody across the street, that City Mattress. Well, they're not here because they have nothing on the books. They don't know what's going on. Not that they don't know what's going on, they don't have a vested, they're not fifty percent in. They're just starting it. They're just now drawing it up right now. So, they're going to have to abide by it. But where we've got these other, and the two entities we're really talking about here, Burnwood and Benita Exchange, so far. But that's all that's come, come up to us right now, and they're already, like Mike has said a couple of times, they've already started, they've got shovels in the ground, they've got buildings there. So, do we want to have an inconsistency of where it is? Now, you're right, there is a outlet, an outlet to come to us and tell us, "Hey, we don't want to have this inconsistency. Will you approve it?" I think all we're doing now is saying, "You're right, we don't want that inconsistency today." Now, if we, as a board, or as a council, say, "Meh, we may consider some inconsistencies with parking lots and building fronts," then we'll vote this down. But I don't think anybody up here wants to have three different layers of an MPD out there. I don't. Maybe, maybe I'm wrong. But what we voted on in the past, it would show that we want consistency along the road for those MPDs.
Council? Yeah, I was going to say, why don't we do public comment at this time? Yeah.
Yeah, Rick Steinmer, we want to be a friendly city now. We're going to tell these people they, they put all this time and money into getting their developments approved, and then all of a sudden, "No, you can't do that." Well, you're taking money out of their pocket, it's just one big benefit to the lawyers. You're going to have all kinds of lawsuits, and if they don't sue you, I'll try and fight on it. These people, I'll sue you for being ignorant. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello again, Council and Mayor. I got some copies too for you guys here. Before I begin the, the presentation, I would like to address a couple of the points made by Councilwoman Corumba and also, yes, Council, Councilman Flynn. Councilman Corumba, you said that you didn't have enough information to make that decision today. I have made this same, this will be the third time that I make this presentation, and today will be a little bit shorter, because I know we have run long. And the vision study comes down to five criteria. And the presentation that I gave to the LPA, which I, I do take umbrage with how this was worded in the green sheet, that the LPA did not just exempt the Burnwood Parkway as it pertains to building setbacks, they exempted the entire park. And if you go back to the record, the entire park was exempted six oh, six oh by the LPA. I gave the presentation to show that the Burnwood Park of Commerce, which is an existing park, ninety percent of the infrastructure's in, the master DO has been issued, it's been issued since the early nineties. The, the, the infrastructure as it pertains to the vision study is already done, and it already meets the five criteria. And I'll, I'll reiterate it again and show you how it does. And, and that was the reason the LPA found that the Burnwood Park of Commerce should be exempt. And in fact, I believe in the zoning here and for the Horizon CPD next door, they used the Burnwood Park of Commerce as an example of how they want things to look. As to, to Councilman Flynn's point, as to this wouldn't create any undue burden, I disagree with that because had that lawsuit not been filed, the process that we were in would not have been interrupted. And so long as Mr. McGarvey's project and the Burnwood Park of Commerce as a whole followed the five criteria, which I'll point out, there would be no interruption. But now, even if we do the same exact thing that we had planned on doing, we now have to wait thirty days for this moratorium to go into effect from today, and then we have to file an application with the city manager, who then has twenty days to determine whether the application is complete. We then have to be put on the agenda with the city council and make our case again, which does create a delay and does create an undue burden. Mr. McGarvey's deal is scheduled to close August first, that's forty days from today. Bank financing's been lined up and been approved. This is not a small project. This is a project that is going to be, when it's all said and done, a thirty to forty million dollar project. The Burnwood Park of Commerce, as, as Councilman DeWitt pointed out, is more than fifty percent built out. If, if we as a property association expose ourselves by telling the people, like Publix and the various banks and gas stations that are there, what, what position does it put us in when we say, "Hey, you guys bought into our park, we gave you these rules and regulations, we have design review, no, no metal buildings, it's got to look nice, all sorts of landscape buffering, architectural review standards, setbacks, et cetera." Those people have a right to reasonably rely on the fact that the rest of the park's going to be built out in like-kind. And we can't have the park look like two different parks. Finally, as, as it pertains to the, how we got here, the vision study had nothing to do with properties east of seventy-five. It never did. It was brought up because of problems with traffic at the beach, problems with traffic at forty-one and Benita Beach Road, and old forty-one and Benita Beach Road, the so-called quadrant areas. And somehow, it got stretched into this eight-mile monstrosity that's now encompassing every single retail development on the road. I get it, we want it to look beautiful, but the, the true crux of this, this vision study was for traffic, walkability, and accessibility, and, and, and creating alternative routes for drivers to move around the town. Mayor, if I could have some more time, please?
Yeah, sure.
So, with that being said, I'd like to present the presentation again and would respectfully request that this council exempt the Burnwood Park of Commerce. The Burnwood Park of Commerce is located east of seventy-five, it's an eighty-acre park, master planned park. The, the out parcels have been about eighty percent developed, it's anchored by Publix, and we have the Cube Smart Development, which we went through a zoning in progress with this council, is being built right here. Here are the five criteria, and if you keep that in front of you while you listen to, to our case or whoever else comes up, those are the five criteria of the vision study. If, if, if any of the developments today don't meet those five criteria, you have every right to say, "No, you should not be exempt." The first is creating walking and biking infrastructure in the forms of sidewalks, bike paths, streetlights, making it safe for people to get around town without the use of a car. The second is to incorporate mass transit by dedicating certain portions...
I'm sorry, Mike, if I might, this is exactly what you did two weeks ago.
Right, but I'm just...
You want to go through it again?
I'm just reiterating it again, because I want to make sure that everybody has enough information to make that informed decision today. To incorporate mass transit by, by dedicating certain parts of your land...
Mike, hang on just a second. Amy?
You know, you started by saying there's only one aspect of this that you, you complied with four. What's the one that you don't comply with, and just cut to the chase?
No, I, I, these are the four I agree with.
Cut to the chase, what is the one that you don't, you can't agree with?
The setbacks for the out parcels...
Which we exempted.
You, it's already accepted, what's the problem?
I need the entire park exempted in the back for the McGarvey project. I can't just have an exemption for the out parcel setbacks, I need the park exempted so that we can...
So, there's something besides the, the, the distance from four, Benita Beach Road?
No, I just need, I just need you to direct staff to process the development order application, so long as it meets the vision study. That's all I'm asking.
So, so, when you presented last time, you went through, you said you met all of these, they're consistent with the visioning. You're comfortable with it?
Correct.
And the only problem you had were the setbacks, and Mr. Forbes made a recommendation, we unanimously agreed on the setbacks. So, what if we just, so, so I hear you saying, Mike, if I might, that what basically happened is, we would have been where we would have been, but the lawsuit got filed, so we didn't go forward. You're going to have to go forward now if you guys do this, that's what I hear you saying. And that's the timing issue.
Correct.
So, what if we just fast-track that? Because, in other words, come in next week, we'll have a meeting next week, and we can go through your presentation and determine whether it's exempt under the standards that we're applying to everybody in the city, as opposed to building in the exemption for one parcel owner here today. Because you have a fair concern, which is timing.
Correct.
And I think we should be responsive to that concern.
I, I guess my argument would be that the LPA voted six to nothing to exempt us, based upon the presentation.
Right.
And all I'm asking you is to take into consideration what the LPA had, and I think you have enough information in front of you today to make that decision.
So, but your specific concern is timing. You want to get it, you want to get it cleared out quickly under a fast process?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mike?
Fred?
Isn't the primary concern that you're scheduled to have a closing with McGarvey on this project in August?
Correct.
And if we didn't, if we didn't put this in this ordinance we're passing today, then...
McGarvey walks. That's, that's, that, that, we have, we have, this is a very large project with, with multiple moving parts. There's been feasibility study, studies done for absorption. There's been, there's been multiple consultants in place and have been paid. He's got, I don't know how many dollars, but like, he can tell you, so far sunk into this project. We have bank financing lined up, that, that, there's certain deadlines that we have to meet. And, and I've come forward, this is my third time coming forward and telling you, you know, we're, we're adhering to the vision. It's, it's not hard, there's five things you have to do. And, and this has nothing to do with the setbacks from Benita Beach Road at all. This is, it's the part, the park's there, it's got a bus stop. It's got buffering, it's got architectural standards in place, it's got a sidewalk, it's got a reverse frontage road. It's got multiple driveways on Hunter's Ridge Boulevard and Benita Grand for interconnectivity. I, I don't know what else the Burnwood Park of Commerce could do to adhere to the vision study other than requiring the last two out parcels here to get pushed up to the road past our berm. And all we're asking for is uniformity in the front.
We gave it to you.
You agreed to that, but, but, but if we agree to the statute as written, it's gonna delay my closing with this, whatever this off-ramp is that we have to follow, it's gonna delay it eighty days, ninety days?
Audrey?
If I, I, I need to check with Mr. Bassinet as well as see if council is, I mean, definitely see if council's okay with this. If we take out the language closest to Benita Beach Road and just change it to Burnwood Park of Commerce as it relates to building placement and setbacks, I think that would be done.
Would be done how? I mean, so, as it pertains to Burnwood-
That's the only issue.
So, is it gonna exempt Burnwood Park of Commerce? All, from, 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 I don't, I don't, I don't, the way it's written, the way it is written to me is that it exempts Burnwood Park of Commerce from the building setbacks, but you still have to go through this off-ramp?
That's not the way I understood it. And to, to go back to the, to what, the, the language as I understand it, said that if you are consistent with the vision, there is not a difference in the processing of your application. It is, it is if there is a finding of inconsistency that you have to, to come back to council, and we start looking at review days that, that you just outlined. Those days for a project that is considered consistent with the vision, the way I understand it, do not apply, because the application proceeds unimpeded.
At community, at community development.
That's correct.
Okay.
It is, it is if we, if we receive comments back from, from Tool Design stating a list of items that they feel are, are not consistent with that vision, and an applicant feels that those conditions are either, one, inappropriate, or two, actually not implementing the vision, an appeal would then come to this council. But if there is a consistent application, I say consistent meaning everybody agrees that it is, it proceeds as a normal, in this case, development order.
Who makes that decision?
That would, that would be reviewed just like our normal process, and it would be Tool Design providing the lead in the comments for Benita Beach Road vision.
So how can you fast-track his situation, so he's nowhere near this date that Councilman Forbes keeps talking about? He submits, sits down with you, you promptly go through it and tell him?
We, we could, and, and what I think we could do, and, and I don't wanna guarantee somebody else's calendar when I don't know of their availability, but we could set down a time to have, maybe have Ian on the phone and, and have a discussion prior to, to a submittal. So that way, if there are concerns, we can vet those out early, and if there are any questions, maybe we just come back for your review. At this point, I, I think Mr. Mauers got a point. The only item that I see that could be an issue, and I, I'm not the lead person issuing the comments, would be for those buildings internally on the frontage roads, they might be requested to be placed closer to the roadway itself and not have the parking up front. And I think that if you listen to Mr. McGarvey, he might voice a little bit of concern that if that comes back, and he has to go through this off-ramp, and the time that's involved in that appeal, I think that's where, that's where he's gonna bump into, to closing issues. And that's why I think there is concern about having this go through without a specific exception or exemption on this project, or at least a portion of the standards as they would apply to this project.
Fred?
Yeah, and to point out what John just pointed out a little clearer. If, if they did say, we want those roads on that interior road, I mean, the buildings moved up and no parking in front of it, the only place he would have to put it is in the back, where that's where the delivery vans and the semis are bringing stuff to these places come in, that they're shielding. And that's, that's not a good thing to have semis and work vans and all that mixed up with public parking.
Well, my question is, excuse me one second, but if we're talking frontage roads within the park, is that consistent with the Benita Beach Road visioning? It's so far removed, how is that part of it? Is my question.
Part of the vision goes into activating streets, and part of activated, the theory of activating streets is to locate buildings up closer to the right of way in the pavement, so that way the front door is right there on the sidewalk. To cut to the chase, without going into a lot of design details, I think Mr. Forbes is exactly right. In, in this particular case, for light industrial projects where there is an overhead door and there's distribution in the back, the way the project is arranged, moving these buildings up to the road is not the issue. It's the moving the parking to a different location away from the front of the building that then creates an issue from, from a functional perspective. So, it, it really is, the bottom line is in this case, and I make no guarantees, because I'm not Ian Lockwood and I do not work for Tool Design, but there is a chance that, uh, that design perspective and this design philosophy may be considered inconsistent with his vision for Benita Beach Road. If that is the case, we start running into scheduling issues with how this project wants to proceed in terms of transfer of ownership.
Even though it's not physically on Benita Beach Road?
Correct.
It's two blocks back or a block back or three hundred feet.
It is within the Benita Beach Road vision, and therefore those items of the vision would apply.
But the community development decision is yours, it's not his. You take his advice.
We have, as the author of the vision, we have deferred to him. If the council says, uh, no, John, that's not correct, community development needs to take the lead on this, we can do that. Uh, I would just need this council to tell me that that's the case.
Well, I would suggest, if we can just move forward and deal with this on a fast track, that you guys be appropriately flexible with respect to that, because I'm hearing what Greg's saying, and I agree on that.
If, if we do this, I would, I just, whatever we're doing, we would plan to bring back to council, uh, just so you are updated on what we're doing, or actually, at that point, it will be what we have already done. So if there are specific instructions or things that you would like us to, to, uh, pay special attention to, now would probably be the time to, to provide that direction.
Well, my big holdup is, you know, I, I'm all for the Benita Beach visioning. I'm not a fan of having the buildings up on the road, especially, we're talking about the interchange area, where, you know, this is an auto-centric area. We do have frontage roads, uh, reverse frontage roads, even over in Beneath Exchange, is Quail Drive or?
Quail's Nest Loop.
Quail's Nest, you know, there's, there's another frontage road there. I mean, so we're not talking about being on Benita Beach Road. So, that's my main holdup that I'm really looking to exempt is from this whole putting the buildings up on the road thing. I, I think everybody else is fine with meeting the, you know, pedestrian quality and bicycles and being able to get access.
Counsel, sorry, Mike, Mike has the floor.
Um, so I mean, it, I mean, it sounds to me like we want them to be able to go forward as if nothing happened, and, you know, have that relief, or not even a relief valve, it's just like nothing happened. We want everything, you know, as it was. And, and that's all I was really asking with this exemption from the moratorium itself, not the overall vision, you know, parts of the visioning. You know, like I said, I do have a problem with the buildings beyond the road. I think it, looking at Benita Beach Road, it should be more in sections, the closer you get to the beach, things like that makes sense. In town, it makes sense. But when you're right next to the interstate, you know, being right up on the road, that's one part I don't agree on the vision, so. And that's my whole reasoning behind the exemption. And they already have things in the works, they've already brought stuff to us that we've approved. It's, you know, I just don't wanna keep throwing monkey wrenches in, in the works and slowing them down and losing, you know, people that wanna do something, they wanna do business in Benita, so.
Peter?
Nothing.
Nothing, okay. Greg? Amy?
If you're suggesting that we exempt them from the moratorium, and then what would happen?
What, what I think, in a simple exemption, really doesn't change the rules. What I think you would want to do is, is specify which sections of the Benita Beach Road vision you would want them exempt from, if that is your intent.
Well, that's my point. I don't want a total exemption over everything. If there's a, a sticky point, which I'm receptive to what you're saying, I, you know, none of us wanna have that adjustment. We want the consistency within your park, but not to have a total exemption for everything from Benita Beach Road, not on how you phrase that.
I think, I think you just direct staff to process the application in accordance with the Benita vision study, with the exception of the setback.
All right.
And, and so long, so long as Mr. McGarvey, what he's presented, is so long as he does what he says, just like a zoning in progress.
Right.
He's gonna do what he says, and you direct staff to say, listen, if he's gonna, if he's gonna build this building, and this is where he's gonna put it, and look at all the landscaping he's doing, and he's putting extra landscaping in the berm for Hunter's Ridge, and he, and he maintains accessibility, and he has streetlights, and he, and, and-
You made your case.
You, you direct staff to process.
Audrey, but just with the suggestions that you made that make that little adjustment, so that it would be not only along Benita Beach Road, but within the, within that, I'd be happy with that.
I would delete the words closest to Benita Beach Road-
Right.
And just have Burnwood Park, uh, of Commerce as it relates to building placement and setbacks. Period. Your acceptance.
So we got that one done.
And Beneath Exchange. And there's more public at that.
They haven't come up yet.
Right, they haven't come up yet. The other one in that area is, of course, sections one and two. Allow Beneath Exchange.
Audrey, the LPA have that kind of an issue?
The LPA wasn't focusing-
Did the LPA have that issue?
Um, I don't, LPA-
Which, for which project?
Just what we're talking about, huh?
Hey, folks, I just wanna remind everybody, we got a lot going on here, and I run a pretty loose meeting, but I'm not, we're not gonna keep talking over each other, so thank you.
So, Burnwood Park of Commerce, LPA did do an exemption. I, I thought it was pretty much they exempted the whole thing. And then council was more limiting to it. I did it based on what I understood the motion to be, but as it relates to building placement and setbacks would be more broad if we covered the entire Burnwood Park. I do not recall Beneath Exchange being a item that the LPA did offer that comment. They did offer that comment on Oakland Park CPB, Mr. Stoudt, who's here. I do have alternative language, actually drafted by Mr. Dolmer, for Beneath Exchange. If we do, if council's inclined to consider an exemption, only the limited language, you don't want something where they're gonna ask for more. So that's where, uh, very limited, as Mr. Forbes said, as to that one provision, but also having any drive-throughs must be completely screened from Benita Beach Road. And the screening aspect.
And John, you had something?
No, sir, I was, I was just gonna try to help clarify with Councilman Slatter, there was not additional information.
Okay. Counsel?
Oh, we're still on public council.
So, so what, what-
Coming back here for-
I would just respectful, respectfully request that Mr. Forbes and, and Mr. Gibson's motion to exempt the Burnwood Park of Commerce be voted on. If we're not gonna be exempt, then I would like, uh, uh, Councilwoman Corumba's, uh, uh, direction to direct staff to process in accordance with the vision study, with the exception of the setback. So if we could, we could do a two-stage vote, I'd really appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Michael. Other members of the public?
Good morning. For the record, Neil Montgomery. I'm here on behalf of Horizon Park Investments LLC. Some of you will remember this project, 'cause you just heard it last month. With the exception of Councilman O'Flynn, who wasn't there, so he won't remember, but you were here for over three hours, where you had extensive staff presentation from Ian on the Tool Design Group, uh, recommendations. You didn't accept the recommendation about pushing the buildings out on the road, because once again, this property is in the interchange. It's, uh, to the west of the Burnwood property and east of the interstate. But you went through all of those criteria, you thoroughly evaluated it, and the project was just approved. So, what's different to answer Councilman O'Flynn's question is, had the comp plan amendment just gone into effect, we would have been reviewed under those criteria, and when we submit for our development order on Friday, it would be processed. What happens now is, with a moratorium, if you're not accepted or exempted, you can wait for eleven months or longer until the litigation's over. And I'm gonna tell you, the litigation's not gonna be over in eleven months, especially if you decide to appeal to the first DCA, so it's two years from now before people can actually exercise their property rights. That's the problem. So, I believe, I'm hopeful, that paragraph H on page five of your ordinance that Audrey referenced when she began this discussion, she mentioned this project and mentioned sending a letter that would allow this project to proceed to get a development order in accordance with the zoning that you just approved last month after having been in the process for a year. So, I want to make sure I'm not leaving fat, dumb, and happy, thinking I'm okay and I'm not okay. So, if you can confirm that the Horizon Park can proceed forward in accordance with the zoning you just approved to get a development order, then I will sit down and be quiet.
The answer is yes, right?
Yes.
If it's honest, counsel?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Charles Bassinet for the record with Henderson Franklin. I'm here representing, um, two entities. One is Lennar, and that has to do with sections one and two at the end of, uh, east side of Benita Beach Road. It's my understanding from the current verbiage in the ordinance, in the moratorium ordinance, and the discussion I've heard today, that they're going to be exempted out from the moratorium.
Right.
If that's correct, then I'll move on to the, the second. The second one is Mr. McGarvey, um, in the Burnwood Park of Commerce. And I'll keep this brief, but his, his concern is the moratorium, because it affects his financing. And if the moratorium's on his site, then he doesn't get the financing, so he doesn't do the deal. From his perspective, and as Mike said a few moments ago, the park is over fifty percent developed, it's got infrastructure in there. There's a certain aesthetic value to what's already been built, but he's willing to comply with the visioning statement, visioning study, with the exception of moving the buildings forward, the building setback. That's the only thing that's giving him a hard time. So, there is a provision in your ordinance, it is actually section three E, that speaks to something like this, where it says that no applications for development orders can come forward unless it's processed in accordance with your ordinance, unless the council provides direction, either through this ordinance or through approval of zoning or site plans. Well, they've got, they've got zoning already. They're in for site plan or development order approval, so it's just really this council saying, and putting into the ordinance, that they are exempted from the ordinance, the Burnwood Park of Commerce, with the exception of, and they must meet the visioning study, with the exception of the building's placement. And so long as you're willing to do that, then we don't have any disagreement.
Okay, thank you.
I'm good with that.
Other members of the public, please come forward.
Just one second, is, um, can I ask if whatever Mr. Bassinet said, we could write that down?
Oh, I already did.
All right, all right, thank you, thank you.
And I changed the sentence, because it was very, it read wrong, but it just says, Burnwood Park of Commerce, uh, the, the Beneath Beach Road vision will not apply as it relates to building placement and setbacks.
Great, great, thank you. Good afternoon.
Mayor, Keith Jennings, Beneath Exchange, what she said, I'll take that for Beneath Exchange. We meet every criteria of the vision plan. We're putting in the, the revert, I'm spending millions of dollars right now on the reverse frontage roads. We've given everything-
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Side conversations outside, please. That's second or third time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Anyway, again, we've been through the process, we've been through zoning, we're ahead of Benita, uh, Burnwood and Horizon. We're ahead of them. We're already putting the infrastructure in, we've got retailers ready to sign leases, we've got buildings designed and in for DO on their own right, and I got an apartment project behind us that's ready to come in. They've already had their pre-app, it's another thirty-five million dollar, you know, plus project as well. And that, the, the vision plan never really mentions mixed use. So, we're, we're, we're in compliance with everything, except for the setback from the front of Benita Beach Road. We can go through a whole presentation to show you all the, all the buildings that are already there, that are, you know, already setback from the road, and putting us up front would be a burden. Again, if we can just get the same language that you're giving, uh, you know, Burnwood, we're good, we'll sit down, and we won't have the three other presentations on the apartment buildings and the out parcels, okay? I mean, we're not, we're not doing anything that we haven't already come up here and done with you before. Carl came to us early in the process last year, when you were getting your vision plan done, asked us to do certain things to comply with it. We did those voluntarily. We've all met those, we've, we've met all of those criteria, we got our development order, we're putting in the infrastructure, and we're just trying to get going. And a moratorium will tell our retailers that they can't do any business here, and we gotta wait more and more, and, and we can't wait anymore, because we've got, we got skin in the game, as has been said before. I'll leave it there, and if that's good with you guys, then I don't have to have a barrage of more witnesses come up.
Yeah, great, hang on just a second. Fred?
Keith, simple question.
Yep.
I've got a drawing, uh, actually, it's a, uh, site plan drawing, shows the, the, uh-
Waffle House and the Speedway?
Front canopy of the gas station. It also shows the, uh, artichoke. Where will your building be, is it gonna be way back behind the front of the artichoke and way back behind that canopy?
It won't be way back.
What, how far back is it?
A hundred and tw- what, a hundred and twenty feet, we have-
Yeah, that's, that's-
Jeremy Gorovitz, Tricor. The front doors of our multi-tenant strip would line up almost to the foot with the front door to the Speedway gas station.
All I can tell you is, uh, basically, your artichoke is roughly sixty feet of parking and aisleway and a, a landscape strip. He's, it's twice as far back as artichoke.
That, that's not true, with all due respect. That, that's not true, with all due respect. Artichoke is set back roughly 122 feet from Benita Beach Road to the front door of artichoke. Our front doors would be set back roughly 180 feet, whereas the adjacent Speedway is set back 220 feet.
So you're saying they have more landscape buffer?
We fall in between the artichoke and the Speedway gas station.
There's, there's only a row, one row of parking in front of their building on the, and then one row up on Benita Beach Road. It's not double rows, it's just one road in front of the building. It's not any different than anything else that would be at a freeway interchange. You would, this is, this, and they do, they do incredible work all over the country. You know, we've got first-class developers with first-class, you know, the best tenants you could want, okay? And they'll go elsewhere if we put a moratorium on it and slow the process down. They have stopped leasing negotiations until this moratorium business gets cleared up. They just, businesses don't like uncertainty.
That's what we're doing, clearing it up.
Yep.
John? Anything to observe here about what Fred is talking about or Mike?
If council is interested in talking about this project similar to how we did with Burnwood, I do have proposed conditions. But if council is not interested in talking about it, then there's not a discussion.
I would be.
Okay.
Similar to Burnwood, yeah.
I think... I'm sorry, I moved some pages around. What I...
Did you have your lunch?
Yes, I did. What we talked about was first separating the apartment complex from the rest of the project. The reason why I say that is the apartment complex is going to be gated, there will be no public access. It is generally not going to be visible from Benita Beach Road, and the most impacted people will be the residents that choose to live there. So design standards could be exempt there because it is going to be its own self-contained project. The second would be to address the setback location for the strip building. And we would propose something similar to what you had done with Horizon in matching adjacent and nearby commercial uses. And that would generally be to have one row of parking with, I'm sorry, one drive aisle with parking on either side and a landscape buffer. The third would be to address drive-through issues, and this is something that, that there are already standards in the Land Development Code to address, but we would simply state they would need to be shielded from Benita Beach Road. So that way the drive-through would not be visible from the right-of-way to Benita Beach Road. And if those three things were addressed, we believe that the, the project could be considered consistent and compatible with the intent of the vision, even though not every standard would be...
As relates to setbacks?
Correct, yes, sir.
And that addresses the question Fred was asking about, how far back is this? Keith was saying this, Keith was, I heard him saying there's only one row of parking there.
Right.
And, and I apologize, I actually had some aerials and I started drawing in where the, the line would be if council is interested, but...
I would be interested in that, it sounds like it's responsive to what his concerns were and consistent with the other ones.
Yes, sir, and just so you know, what, all I've done is simply draw a line from the front of the Speedway building onto the out parcel that we have discussed.
When you talk about additional screening for the drive-through, does Culvers meet that additional screening right now?
The drive-through, not the...
But, yeah, on the drive-through.
John, have you got a copy here to talk through this, sir?
Yes, sir. To answer the question from Councilman Gibson, the approval for Culvers showed that it would be consistent with that statement. The landscaping that was installed actually needs to be replaced because it was not consistent with the approvals. So the, what you see today, you're correct, it is not consistent with that standard. When they're finished with it and they're compliant, it will be.
But the, the building is fine, it's just the landscaping that's the issue.
Yes, sir, because what, the, the, the condition is it should not be visible from the right-of-way. And currently, the landscaping that should shield it does not do the job.
And you're referring to the landscaping on...
For the drive-through window.
Yeah.
Not, I'm sorry, the, the, not the, not the order board, the drive-through window.
Right, but that's not the one on Beach Road, you're talking about the frontage roads where it's not compliant.
We were talking about Culvers.
I know, I'm looking at it right here on the, on this map.
Oh, okay.
And the drive-through is on the back of the building towards the Home Depot.
So the, the screening is on...
From Sardini Lane or whatever. Correct.
Steve?
Yeah, I just wondered if we could move on this, I'm, I'm in favor of both, I would like to move.
Counsel? Okay, more public comment? Anybody else, I'm sorry, anybody else that wants to speak just so we can gauge, please stand. So, I mean, I'm not trying to make you stand necessarily, but, so, okay. Okay, great, thank you. Yep.
Hi there, my name's Colin Raskin. I just wanted to, we are looking at a project.
Little bit into the microphone, I apologize.
We're, we're looking at a project, and we've been working with city staff around eight, nine, 10 weeks on this, and we're going back and forth. Our project is next to the Culvers, it's in the development, I think it's the arts PD in front of Home Depot. We are, we've been working with staff to comply with the vision. We've managed to kind of change our building, and we've been doing everything we can to comply. We have a contract that goes firm, actually, I think it's end of this month, we're going firm, we're making the purchase of the land, and we're still not able to get the direction, even although we're trying to do everything that we can to comply with the vision. We're waiting for Tool Design Group to give us their opinion, and it seems that Tool Designs Group is one person, and it's very subjective whether they like it or if they don't. And if they don't like it, then what do we do? We are doing our best, staff have told us that they think if we don't comply, we're very, very close. But we're actually wanting to comply. What I'm just asking for is maybe staff need the direction from council that they know the intent of the vision, and based on the feedback that they get from Tool Design Group, that they're actually able to make that decision. So that just because Tool Design Group say, "I don't like a tree here," or "I don't like that there," the city staff know the area, they know what's going on around it, they know the surroundings. So I just feel it's important that they have the ability, knowing what the intent of the vision is, to be able to make that decision. Because if that off-ramp isn't there, even although we're doing our best to comply and we can't get anything definitive, we're in big trouble, and we're doing our best to comply, and I don't feel that as a business, a small business, we, it's, it's just not, it's really hard to make any solid decisions, and it just all feels, feels so risky. So I just feel that staff needs that permission from you guys to follow the intent. Thank you.
Great, thank you. I was going to say, anything, other members, John? Yeah.
Would you like me to respond after Mr. McGarvey or now?
Sure, go ahead.
I'd just simply like to state that he is correct. He has a car wash plan, actually, he runs a car wash on Airport Road in, in North Collier. And what he has been able to do since the original application is turn the tunnel parallel with Benita Beach Road so that we're not looking down the tunnel, has done a significant change in terms of how he's going to shield with landscaping and with, with walls. And so to date, I would agree with his statement.
Great, thank you, John. Good afternoon.
John McGarvey, if you don't know me, I did Riverview, I've done Gateway, Stereopark Commons, 20 different other locations. We picked your location to be out here, and we're a flex building, a flex builder, and you'll see my site plan as it comes up. Everybody asking these questions, why? If we don't get the relief for the moratorium for the moving the buildings back, my, my buildings won't work. So that's why I got to walk, because I don't want buildings where, I did a Stereopark Common, I did a reverse frontage. 35% of the buildings failed. You know what I mean, I don't need those kind of numbers. So what I'm saying to you today, I got a master plan to John, John asked for it, we worked with staff all the way through, and we're in good shape. The only problem is I just want to make sure that my moratorium is off because for two reasons. One is the setback. You can see where I have the loading docks in the rear, I have the people drive up, I'm way off behind the road. At the same time, it's my in-office buildings, which I see as my urgent care. The people like to walk right up their front and walk right into the building, so it's very clear. The other buildings over here, I've talked with staff, people and all, we moved the loading docks to face each other. So we complied with you all the way. Problem is, like your, your person before me, your consultant does not respond. My plans have been in, the staff has pushed him to the max to get, no answer back, he doesn't want to answer. Because mine do not meet that criteria of the rear, front, rear, front setback. Because I, I need to be moving the parking in their front and the loading docks in their rear. And I want to head further to do two buffer zones on the rear of the property to do so. Let's talk about the moratorium. Sure, we all use bank financing. Bank financing today is tough for a developer unless you're pre-leased where you are and what you got, or deep enough pockets to weather it. The problem, you say moratorium, if I don't get the moratorium off of me, they won't give us the money. So let's be fair where we are, that's where we are today. And I can see moratoriums, I've seen them three, four years. And no bank wants to be in bed with you for three or four years without building. And that's the problem, okay? Thank you.
Thank you very much. John, anything?
I, I think that you've already gone through and we're in general agreement with him. I don't know how you felt about not including this property in the moratorium. I think that's the only discrepancy between your previous discussion and...
It's the language that Mr. Bassinet had recited, we have that down.
Yeah, it's in there.
Right. It's the one I said, are you writing down what he's saying?
Yeah, and the language, well, that, the one Mr. Bassinet was, the Benita Beach Road vision will not apply to Burnwood, but we have...
No, he didn't say that.
We have other language in the, here that...
No, no, well, Mr. Bassinet representing Mr. McGarvey, he came up and he gave some language.
Under Section 3E.
Right, but that's already in there.
It is?
Yeah, that, that's what I was just about to say.
Okay, thank you. Where is it?
But no applications for DOs for properties subject to the temporary moratorium may be processed unless council provides direction, either through this ordinance or through approval of the zoning or site plans. So that means either the site plan comes back to you...
No. John?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Bassinet, would you repeat what you said before?
Do you read that?
Thank you.
For the record, Charles Bassinet, I had simply pointed council's attention to Section 3E of the ordinance.
Right.
That I thought gave you the ability to make the decision today to exempt, to exempt Burnwood Park from the moratorium ordinance, but with a proviso. The proviso being that they have to comply with the visioning statement except for the building placement.
Right.
And I thought, I thought that language gave you the ability to put that into your moratorium.
Right, so that's the words that relate to...
Are you asking me to put a proviso so that we have a specific exemption of the property?
He's saying he's, he's willing to comply with the visioning with the exception of the...
Building setback.
Thank you.
So Audrey, my understanding is from earlier discussions that the wording was something like, with the exception of setbacks and building placement, that that was all going to be going into an exception. I think that's what we're talking about here.
Okay, so adding it in, similar to Burnwood Park of Commerce, add in, is it car wash, you were saying? Yeah, Burnwood, I thought we completed.
Well, that's, that's what we're re-going over.
That's what we're re-going over.
We're making sure the Burnwood one is in there.
The way I have Burnwood read is the Benita Beach Road vision will not apply to Burnwood Park of Commerce as it relates to building placement and setbacks.
That's right, that's right.
That's okay.
Yes, so that's fine.
Great, thank you.
And I think that's the same thing that Benita Exchange is looking for.
Benita Exchange, I, I wrote differently, may I read it in the record?
Sure. Yes.
Benita Exchange, development orders may be processed subject to review of final site plans, of final site plans by city council prior to issuance of development orders, and we can take that out in conformance with the fol, as long as you're okay if John reviews it all. In conformance with the following, apartment complexes may proceed to development order due to it being gated and not open to the public. The commercial portion may be exempt from moratorium as long as building locations are consistent with adjacent properties along Benita Beach Road and recent approvals such as Horizon Park. This will allow a single driveway for, with parking on either side between the right-of-way and the building. And then number three, any drive-through facilities must be completely screened from view from Benita Beach Road.
Now, given the language that, that I've suggested here, I'm presuming that your direction is going to be that your staff process the development orders that Mr. McGarvey is submitting and has submitted on this property, so long as they comply with the proviso that they are in compliance with the visioning statement except for the building setback.
Mm-hmm. Sounds right to me, John?
And I have a question for us is, because I'm confused about this issue that's been raised several times in ba, in regard to the length of the, the delay here. It seems to me that what this moratorium is trying to do is saying that any developer can just come in and do their normal application process if they are willing to comply with the intent of the ordinance which we passed that is now on hold because of the, the lawsuit. And if they are in agreement to complying with the intent of that, then they just get processed in a normal way. So what is the delay by having a, I don't understand what the moratorium does in regard to delaying it even further? The delay, where I see, let me just go one more minute. If they do not want to comply with all the, the intent, those five things, then you could, you're not supposed to process it. Is that the correct...
Percy, additional direction from council.
Unless you come to council and we say, "Process it and we'll, we'll, we'll deal with it on an individual basis."
Correct, because what you would simply state is if they're not consistent with the vision, they would, they would be placed under the moratorium. If they wish to appeal that decision, that appeal would come to council.
So the problem is if they are not able to or don't want to comply. Because when we did, when we discussed the moratorium the first time, council was clear that we did not want to interrupt with the normal development process. So I want to be sure that this moratorium does what it says.
And, and I think the concern is, is basically the development standards for projects that are either under construction or about ready to, to change ownership. For those projects that are just now beginning their design work, I don't think there's as much of a concern. You can have a philosophical discussion, but it is not a functional discussion. So that's why I think you're seeing these particular property owners and developers come speak to you because they either are under construction currently, or they're about ready to close and, and begin construction immediately after that. So that's why I think this gets a little complicated, and, and that is the problem with moratoriums. We want everything to, to stop until we have something in place. However, not everybody is in a place where, where it's so easy to stop. And, and that's where...
But we're not, but we're not stopping.
But council doesn't want to stop, that's the point.
I, I agree with that, and actually, I think that we've done...
That's not our intent here.
And I've, I've added, if staff makes a determination meets the intent of the vision, it's going forward.
And may, and maybe I'm being naive about this, but instead of coming to council three times or something, why don't they just come and make a presentation and see what we do, you know?
That comes later.
You know, I, I think that would be a more efficient of the time if we're worrying about the time. Make, make the case, you know, that's what I, what I think, but...
And, and on your wording, as long as they meet the intention of the vision minus the building placement setback?
Yes, sir.
Right, yes, we have that.
Well, right, and we have it conditionally, both for Benita Exchange and Burnwood, the conditions.
Mr. Mayor, council members, again, we, we want the same language as Burnwood. I'm further along.
Well, and that's what I'm asking for.
I mean, well, no, they've added all these other conditions and everything else, we've already complied with all this stuff. We've, you know, you know, Councilman Cora, we, we've been through, you know, hearings, and we've been through development orders, and we've been through submissions of new development orders for specific buildings, and we've got capital deployed, and we are looking for a return on our investment. And to go back through another process for a minor variation, which is the setback, and this is the only thing where the apartments are completely different than the retail out front. And this is, you know, we already have a development order in, in, in the process. And Mr. Tool, or the Tool Design Company, you know, they've, they've, I guess, just got back to Jackie last night, and, you know, we're more than 45 days, and now we're going to have to go through waiting 30 days for this moratorium to be enacted and another 20 days after that.
No, you don't have to wait, you can do everything right now.
Well, I, I, with all due respect, and I'm not a lawyer, it doesn't sound like until the, until the statute's in, until the ordinance is in place, you can actually make an application for a variance from the ordinance.
I guess my question is what variance are you...
The setback, just the...
We've said, we've said the setbacks, we're going to release that.
Yes, but they've added, they, you know, they've added more than Burnwood. So all of a sudden, I'm getting treated differently than Burnwood, I just want the same thing.
The only thing other than that was that you made the comment about the apartments are already something different.
Right, right.
Did you disagree with the apartment?
No. The apartment, I mean, the apartment should not have any, you know...
Okay, so I think John said that. Second part of it is, is the shielding of the drive-through, which is exactly what there's... Second part of it is, is the shielding of the drive-through, which is exactly what's happened at Culvers right now.
Nobody has any problem with that. It's the building setback.
So what are we waiting for?
Yeah, so I don't understand what the thing is. We've said that you are exempt from the setbacks.
John, what do we, what do we-
Why did we get, why did we get extra ones here?
Time out, everybody. Time out. Time out. John?
The language that I proposed to you is an attempt to be consistent with two council decisions in the recent past. The first being for Horizon Commercial Plan Development. And in that case, you relied upon the location of the property and also its relationship to the Burnwood out parcels. And you wanted them to generally line up in that area. The second was the exemption of those two vacant out parcels for Burnwood so that they would line up with the existing development. In this particular case, what I've tried to do in the language proposed to you is identical, in so much that you would generally line up with where development is along this roadway. Now, it does vary a little bit. You're not going to see a straight line of development. However, what you'll find is most of those developments will have a single driveway with parking on either side in front of each of those buildings. I think that's consistent with what is in that surrounding area. I think that that treats Mr. Jennings fairly and his tenant fairly, and I think that it will provide consistency in this area. That is why there was different language than there was for Burnwood. Burnwood simply has to line up with what's beside them and what the standards are.
So let, moving forward and not trying to cut anybody off, let's deal with, we're dealing with a lot, let's deal with one issue at a time while allowing the public to speak and further talk about other issues. So anybody else from the public would like to speak at this time? And please be specific as to what the issue is for us up here, if nobody else. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. My name is Jim Fox. I am with the law firm of Retsalandrus and I represent Angler's Paradise, which is, if you don't know, it's about 27 acres on the west side of US 41, just south of the Imperial Bridge. It's a beautiful little place. There's a marina and it looks out over the river. It's just, it's just north of the center of Benita Plaza. We asked the council not to impose a moratorium. It's bad for business. It's bad for the city of Benita. It's bad for landowners. It's just not a good idea. But if you are intent on doing it, we would ask that we also have an exemption from the moratorium. Angler's Paradise has had a planned development approved since 2009. Now, the rules kind of changed along the way. We had a recession. Our client had difficulties developing the property. Part of the approval process required a master concept plan. That master concept plan expired, according to staff. They wanted us to resubmit. We didn't necessarily agree with that, but we did. We're in that process right now so that we can develop this property. And all we're asking is to have an exemption for this as well, because we have an ordinance that says we can do it. We had a master concept plan. We've already put our application in to develop the property and now the rules seem to be Why our master concept plan didn't get reinstated is a little unclear, but during that same time, what was fast-tracked was this comp plan amendment, including a road that some people want apparently to bisect our property. Now, after we had an ordinance, after we had a master concept plan, and without looking at alternative ways to get a road around the perimeter of our property. I sat here all day listening to government light. With all due respect, a moratorium isn't government light. A moratorium is government as heavy-handed as you can possibly get. And all of these exceptions that you're trying to get out from underneath your heavy hand is the proof of it. Moratorium is a bad idea. We're against it, but if you're going to do it, we would ask that Angler's Paradise be exempted as well. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Other members of the public?
Greetings, once again, for the record, Stan Stoudt, and Ms. Vance, I'm reading in your green sheet that 27971 is exempted from the moratorium.
I'm sorry, I don't know what 27-
27971 in your green sheet relative to the moratorium we're discussing.
I have asked council authorization so I can send you a letter. You're talking about Oakland Park CPD?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, so I have asked council as part of the vote when they get around voting. Hopefully, I can send a letter out clarifying that you're exempt, because you have language to the extent possible when you go for development order, you will comply with the Benita Beach Road Vision.
Okay, thank you. And further to that point, I'm in the midst of procuring equity piece to go get hard financing so I can get a development order. And I echo the sentiments of my forerunners. The, the building with no parking on the road, don't need four lanes, but that's a problem. That's a problem for tenants. It's a problem for life safety. We can't have pedestrians and citizens interfering with heavier vehicular traffic. So when I apply, I would ask that I would be relieved from that building being right on the road-
That's going to him, but-
-so as I can have a functioning site.
There's some flexibility there, but it does need to be oriented towards the road.
Yeah, and I would have two facades to address the architectural that are customer-facing, not one, and, but we need to have that, that, we can't have that building right at the road and no place for our customers to go.
There needs to be an attempt to activate the street, which is something I can work with you on.
Okay. All right, no further comments. Thank you for your time today.
Thank you. Other members of the public?
Jeremy Goravitz Tricor. I'm sorry to make you repeat yourself, but do you mind touching on the language, Ms. Vance, for the exemption of Benita Exchange in regards to the setback?
Sure, it's right here. If you want to read, it's probably easier than me repeating the whole thing. So if you are the, one of the buildings in the commercial portion, which I think is your situation, it would have to be in line with the Home Depot property, which, you know, is next door, along with the Horizon Park CPD as far as conceptual. And if you have a driveway through, a drive-through facility like that, that you have screening requirements.
Thank you.
Okay. Other members, thank you. Other members of the public? Good afternoon, hello again.
Hello again. I'm sorry, and I'm sitting here having quite trouble, I think probably like Amy. This procedure that you're doing here today strikes me as incredibly unfair to anybody else who might have a different viewpoint here. This, there's been no notice to any property owners that might be around these properties that special exemptions are going to be considered. That doesn't strike me as a normal, fair process. And that's, you know, as a citizen, I just would like to make that point. Maybe the best thing to do would be to postpone action on this and let people understand that these are the kinds of issues you're going to be talking about here. I don't have any statement to make on any of these. I have, as I say, no dogs in this fight, but it strikes me that it's a very unfair way to go about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Other members of the public? Going once? Going twice? Okay. Where are we, Audrey?
Okay, so you have the ordinance in errata three. The only changes would be adding the Benita Exchange language, which I believe has been read to you, so I won't read, as well as the modifications to the Burnwood Park, which I did show Mr. Bassinet, he's fine with it. I did make some minor modifications in Sections E and F, just having that the moratorium applies unless council provides the direction or staff determination meets the intent of the vision. So that's for development order. So if the Car Wash meets it, it's not going to be sitting on somebody's desk until the moratorium is over. As far as the remainder, it's also the same language in F. I just want to reiterate, I do want to have permission to send the letter to the four that are not listed in here that I read out loud to council earlier. That's basically it. I would urge you to adopt the moratorium if you want the moratorium. It was suggestion of outside counsel, but it does have other relief valves and other administrative remedies internal. As to neighbors and adjoining who might have an interest, it really is the traveling public of Benita Beach Road and interconnectivity that's the issue. So I'm not sure. It's the same as in the zoning case.
Yeah, Pete, go ahead. Thanks, Audrey.
So I was, I believe it would be foolhardy not to check with outside counsel. There's a lawsuit pending and I gather another lawyer representing the same property came up and said I'm not being treated fairly and wanted similar treatment. Unfortunately, you know, not unfortunately, that's his right. I think you need to check with council handling that litigation about that claim.
Would context have anything to do, because I mean, we are talking about the exchange area versus, you know?
That's, that's where I think we need legal advice.
And I can check on that. I don't know if you want to check before adopting an ordinance or after. That's council's call.
Considering, considering the advice you were giving, we were given yesterday, it's, we had a chat with outside counsel about this issue.
Yes.
All right. That's my suggestion. It's a shame, it's not a shame. He's entitled to his point and I think the ramifications are that it has to be considered by our outside counsel.
Now, it can also be considered under Section 6, so nothing prohibits the same applicant from making a claim that it falls under the remedy provision.
That's what I want him to talk, you to talk to him of.
You want to talk that before the adoption?
Yeah.
Well, and, you know, and I guess, conceptually, I don't have a problem at all, but where you hear, okay, well legally, this is happening to us. Okay, if legally that's happening to them, well then we don't want to be excluded. We want the same as them. So it's kind of this leapfrog effect, not to, there's a lot of legal things here, so I think-
Yes, there is.
So I just don't want to, and then, well, what about this? What about that? What about this? Well, they're doing this, I want to do that. Phew, let's make sure.
Okay, and so we can continue to a time and date certain for either July 5th or because I will not have to counsel those.
Well, we need it before that, because if anything is obvious, there's a time constraint on all the people who have talked today.
And while the people, and, you know, I sense and I see frustration, I get it. Believe me, I get it. But this isn't a, this isn't a package deal, unfortunately. It may be, it maybe could be, but then you hear, I mean, how many different things are we examining here, right? How many is there? Five? Six? I kind of lost count.
Could we pass it base, conceptually based on what outside counsel says? If he says no go, then we, then we bring it back?
Mr. Bassinet?
Sorry, Pete?
Yeah, no, please, yes, please do.
Charles Bassinet, for the record, there's nothing that says that you can't amend the ordinance-
Right.
-in the future if you wanted to. You can pass what you have today, have the discussion with your special counsel that you want to have, and if there's an amendment that you want to make, you can always do that. But it leaves, it leaves all these other guys that were here and have been sitting here now for six, seven, eight hours. It's going to leave them hanging in the wind again, not knowing what's going to happen. You may come back in a week or two and decide this whole thing is off. Who knows?
Yeah.
And it's just, it isn't fair at this point. I mean, you've, there's nothing that says you can't vote on what you've got before you today. Take the one person that's come up, I think it was Mr. Fox and his client Angler's Paradise, go to your special counsel and talk to him about that and see what your special counsel says. And if he says that it's something you should consider, then bring it back for a potential amendment to the ordinance. That's all you've got to do. You don't have to stop the process today because of that one comment.
Yeah. Well, no, excuse me. I think I'd like to have our outside, I'm very sensitive to slowing anybody down, even if that means we need to have a special meeting next week, in my view. But this is very serious, important stuff for us. And what you may think is an amendment may not be what he thinks would be an amendment. And I think we owe it to the citizens of Benita Springs to have a clear look at that. And in response to what you're saying, my view is, we got to play the ball where it lies, all right? It was in the fairway. Now, it was in the fairway until about 20 minutes ago. Now it's a little bit over in the rough, and unfortunately, we got to play it in the rough. And that, in my view, requires us to have a clear view from our counsel in the context of a current lawsuit that's pending.
But rest assured, first of all, that it's very serious to us also, perhaps even more so. And moreover, your counsel has already looked at the exemptions that are here for the most part. And the ones that are the new ones are along the same lines as the ones that existed already. So your counsel's already looked at those except for Angler's Paradise.
Understood, understood.
So there is no, I don't, I can't think of any reason why, if you all wanted to make an amendment to the ordinance to include Angler's Paradise at a later date, that you couldn't do so. There's just no logical reason why that can't happen.
With all due respect, you're not our counsel.
That's, that's true.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Fred?
Well, I tend to agree with that legal counsel, but if we're going to do this thing, continue it to Friday and come back and vote on it. Because that, that at least minimizes the delay to all these applicants and all that.
Can we do that, Audrey? Don't we have to give seven days' notice for advertising?
Yes, because you've advertised that you're continuing to a time and date certain. So I just need to know that we have a physical room and availability and everyone check their calendars.
Okay, for Friday morning.
I don't have my calendar. It doesn't need to be seven days.
This Friday? In two days?
Two days.
Won't be here, but-
All right, we'll have a call.
You can call in.
I can call in.
Yeah. Simple vote.
So we're talking the 23rd. So I have a 3:30, but otherwise I'm open.
Well, there is a motion on the floor.
Yep, there is.
Can that mo-, that motion can stay, can it?
Let me make sure I understand what you're talking about. You want-
The motion that was made with all your amendments was made and seconded, and if that hadn't come up, we'd have voted. We don't have to remake the motion. That means just vote on it.
No, but we could call, someone could call the question and vote on that right now.
I'm not sure we have a motion with everything, because there's been a lot of talk and a lot of stuff since the motion.
Well, it'd be up to Mike and-
I would just, my motion was to exempt those two properties and we pretty much have talked through that, so, you know, yeah, but, I mean, we talked through and we got, but I believed to what I was looking for, so I still feel that my motion, you know, is there. So can we move the motion to Friday morning?
Yeah, legally, you can move it to Friday. I have a special, it's not a special, you're just continuing a portion of this city council meeting and we may need to continue other items on the city council meeting to the Friday, so that we can continue. If you wish to do it that way, alternatively.
But there's no advertising requirements for a week or anything like that?
Not when we've already advertised the ordinance and it's been continued to a time and date certain. When I have an ordinance and we are continuing, I do not buy another display ad. We continue, we announce the time and date certain, that's why I need to know the exact date, the exact time for the continuance.
And Steve?
Yeah, I'm just, I just don't understand why, and Mike, I agree with you, why can't we vote for it on this date? Any reason? Why do we have to wait a couple more days? You want these people to come back again?
No, they don't have to come back.
Well, I don't know why Friday's going to make any different than today.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, why not just exempt everybody who's already in the process, not change the rules on them? Then it solves everyone's problem.
Audrey?
The reinstatement process, he is going to a hearing on the reinstatement. The moratorium doesn't affect his reinstatement request. It may require conditions in his reinstatement request, but that's subject to a future hearing, future date. Nothing is precluding Anglers from also seeking the administrative remedy as contained in Section 6 of the ordinance. Nothing precludes him from presenting things and saying, "Staff, we're going to work with you and get this issue resolved." So there are many relief mechanisms that I think you're fine as far as exhaustion of, you know, administrative remedies. But, and as Mr. Bassinet pointed out, I didn't think about that. You can also go and amend the ordinance if, at a later date, you make that determination or special counsel tells us that it is unduly unfair by having them not in there, but other properties in the corridor exempted, as well as other properties where it still applies.
So we just, should just vote now, then?
Well, and I was just going to say, and not to shut you, we had shut down public comment. I'm not trying to be a stickler here, but we said going once, going twice, going three times. But please, approach. And this will be the last public comment.
Afternoon, Mayor Simmons and Councilman. Steve Brachi, I'm a half of Benita Exchange, and just a couple things. I believe the law in this area would be that before somebody such as Anglers Paradise could make any kind of claim against you by virtue of damage under a moratorium, they'd have to first come back to you and seek some kind of application under that moratorium. So as you, if you go forward today with your vote, you're not in harm's way by next week or something like that, somebody coming back with you. Because they would then have to come before you making an application and a request. Now, the other part of this is, it's really unfortunate that Mr. Theriak isn't here today. I mean, if you guys are concerned about something like this, guys, this is a moratorium related to litigation. Where is your special counsel? If Mr. Theriak is going to become essentially another arm of the government or another, another part of what, of your process, Mr. Theriak should really be here today, because you have all these folks in the room. You have millions and millions of dollars of people. Mr. Jennings has a contract that's supposed to close March, June 30th that he didn't mention. All of this is subject to risk, and all of this costs everyone money and time, and again, it's just more and more and more process. If Mr. Theriak is now an integral part of City of Benita Springs government, he needs to either be here at these meetings or be on the phone, ready to pick it up. Because my understanding is he's not that readily available, nor is Mr. Tool. So as our, as our government is being essentially outsourced beyond the city limits of the, of the City of Benita Springs, with respect to the residents and the folks that want to develop and use and be business friendly in this community, they should be entitled to the dignity of having the resources available to you at these meetings so that these questions can be answered in due, in due course at the time of the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, counsel, what's your pleasure?
Going to call the question.
Okay. Going to call the question? There's been a motion, a second, further discussion amongst counsel.
I just want to reinforce what we're voting on.
Okay.
With all the changes that we've been writing as we have an individual discussion.
With exemptions that we've talked through for...
But not full exemption, not your original.
Burnwood, well, what we've talked about with Burnwood and Benita Exchange.
Burnwood be modified, Benita Exchange would be as we read it into the record. And then you have the request by me to send letters to the applicant, sorry, to some of the properties that, instead of listing them out in the ordinance, because their zoning actually says Benita Beach Road Vision. I was fine with that. I mean, if counsel's okay with me saying it's fine, I'm going to say it's fine. And the other change, to make it very clear, everything doesn't have to come back to counsel. John has the ability to apply common sense with use of tool to go through and make a determination if things are consistent or not consistent. Sir?
Yeah?
But that, that was the changes, as I understand it.
Good, and thank you for saying that, and I do apologize, but I'm going to make you start from the beginning, which you, which you just did, Audrey. No, 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 not, but I just want everybody to be crystal clear what we're doing here.
Okay, so first of all, we're working off of a RADA sheet, three. Make sure that we have the right RADA sheet, make sure I have my right document. So the first, the changes are underlined that were made yesterday. And there are changes to E and F, and those changes basically read, and let me pull up the document, one moment. Did I read it out loud perfectly? And it reads the same in both, and it's the final sentence both, you have it underlined. And I just add, unless city council provides direction, either through this ordinance, through approval of zoning or site plans, or staff determination, it meets the intent of the vision. So that gives staff the ability, and that was the change in that part, for applications of development order to still continue to be processed. It also allows staff, as well as counsel, depending on the situation, if staff's not comfortable with it, it's not, it's coming to counsel. That other applications for DOs can be considered if there's things coming up that we do not know are coming up. So it addresses people who are not here. I have the language as to the development permit. Again, we do not want people thinking that the technical codes, staff is putting a full stop to city business, but if it's a technical code, it's not included. I also have the language in there in number H, and that is, if the zoning ordinance has a condition requiring compliance with Benita Beach Road zoning, visioning study, or will be approved with such condition, because we have a few in the pipeline, the development may continue to be processed. And that's the one I'm requesting counsel to let me send a letter consistent with that paragraph or sentence to make people like Ms. Montgomery calmer. The next part of that sentence also says that staff can continue processing any permitting or rezoning within the Benita Beach Road in the quadrant areas. If it is something interior, or it has no application or no direct relationship with the amendments to the comp plan. And that, good examples of that would be interior or use permits. And then as to properties that have been either found specifically or conditionally exempt, I have the land that we call Sections 1 and 2. I didn't make any changes to that provision. I did modify the Benita Beach Road, sorry, Burnwood Park of Commerce, and that reads, "The Benita Beach Road Vision will not apply to Burnwood Park of Commerce as it relates to the building placement and setbacks." Okay? Mr. Bassinet reviewed that language, and he was okay with it. Benita Exchange, development orders may be processed in conformance with the following. One, apartment complex may proceed to development order due to it being gated and not open to the public. And it's already gone through significant development order. I think you're ready, or has not yet, okay. Two, the commercial portion may be exempt from moratorium as long as building locations and setbacks are consistent with adjacent properties along Benita Beach Road and recent approvals such as Horizon Park CPD. This will allow a single driveway with parking on either side between the right-of-way and the building. Okay? And three, any drive-through facilities must be completely screened from view from Benita Beach Road. And if I keep looking at John, this is, he told me what to write on that one, so I'm going to blame him. And then, the 380.031. Okay, and as to the remedy provision, remember, we previously did talk that the city manager was going to have authority, and there was questions as to the delegation, whether it created de facto committee, and we said, "Make it simpler, make counsel hear any administrative reliefs." This is important so that it does require, there's a doctrine called exhaustion of remedies. And so if Mr. Fox, for example, for Anglers Paradise, or any of the other people that find themselves not in the direct remove, removal system, it provides them with an administrative remedy, whether something is a temporary regulatory taking or interferes with a vested right. It allows us to then ferret the information, apply it to case law such as REHARD. And when you were talking about the 2020, just so you know, the 2020's first property purchase was the REHARD parcels that were subject to this law case. So Lee County purchased land, and Benita was its first purchase in 2020, just. And then it talks about the REHARD, and those are language that was given to me by outside counsel specifically for this particular case. I did take out the 45 days. Comes directly to counsel, there's a timeframe that we have to have it scheduled to counsel. Now, we can always schedule it earlier. I did put 20 days. That allowed us, if there was meetings on, say, the 1st and the 14th of the month, or 1st and 15th, or the earlier days, I didn't want a situation where we weren't able to schedule something. So that's why you have 20 in there. And I took out the rest of that process, because it's no longer an appeal process. It's a direct go to, do not pass go, go right to city council. You'll make the call based on having a complete application. So you will have all the documents, so you can process this and do the proper review. And those are the changes.
Great. Okay, counsel, any questions of Audrey?
Yeah, just one, could you recite for your counsel, the advice outside counsel gave to you yesterday with respect to listing?
So, all right. I'm giving you, there, there was questions and there were discussions listing. First of all, David and I, David Theriak was not on that phone call. I had Brent Spain, and I had Terrell, Terrell Arline on that call. David and I had a prior conversation that you can list them in the ordinance. He has done so in moratoriums, I have done so. There was discussion as whether or not having a listing created a problem, because people either had like kind. I can't remember exactly his words verbatim, so I'm, you know, afraid to put in words. I believe it was Terrell Arline, not Brent, who was discussing the listing. When it was objected in the room by one of the members in the room as to the listing language, I had a prior draft where I did list out the properties, including the four properties. I said, "Please let me send a letter," because I've received letters, and also, some of them I didn't receive. I'm just trying to give the information, counsel.
I was just asking for you to recite what his advice was, that's all.
I would say that his advice was, it was debated. I will think that, and he said, "Yes, you can take it out." I mean, that's how I got it.
Is there any email that we want to refer to?
No, it was verbal.
Okay, okay.
I don't have his exact, if you wish to say his exact, or John, if you feel comfortable saying...
No, it's not necessary.
Okay. Counsel, any other questions? Okay, my, and we have called, Mike has called the question, Councilman Gibson? So no further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman McCorumba?
Aye.
Councilwoman Duit?
Aye.
Councilwoman Slackto?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilwoman O'Flynn?
No.
Okay. Where are we now?
Have we finished it? I don't know.
County attorney's report, I believe.
We're on city attorney's report.
City attorney's.
All right.
And I did promise the city manager, I will do each of these in three minutes or less.
Okay.
I'll do one minute if you want.
One minute.
We're the one that's going to mess it up. We're the one that's going to put the time on it.
It's not your fault.
Okay. Item A, I'm requesting you to approve a resolution so we can complete the due diligence purchasing the property. This is the one, we followed a specific statutory process that required a 30-day delay. We now have the affidavit of publication, it's in the packet, showing that we did notice that we're going to be purchasing the property. We are doing the due diligence, Arlene can fill you in if you wish, it's written out here. Because the amount is lower than the actual amount in the purchase contract, I do need an extraordinary vote, which I calculate to be a super majority of five, on the motion.
Okay. Counsel?
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second? Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman McCorumba?
Aye.
Councilwoman Duit?
Aye.
Councilwoman Slackto?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilwoman O'Flynn?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gibson?
Aye.
The next is property that I've been asked to negotiate a real estate contract. I'm bringing it to you, there's two questions to ask yourself here. And in this case, there's a life estate. The city cannot use the full use of the property, it would be subject to a life estate. They limited the life estate to just the house and the driveway, so the city could use the land beforehand. In this case, the life estate in this situation is a lot younger than my prior life estate, so I'm estimating, based on actuarial tables, it might be 10, 12 years before we're able to have the ability for the full amount. So that's a threshold question first on this, and this is the property Bertold, which is the one that is Mr. Hasty's life estate. So that's a question counsel needs to first use. If you're okay with that, the second recommendation in this is because the Florida constitution does not allow mortgages on property, he cannot hold a private mortgage for the three years. We can do it where we structure it for the three years, or counsel, can you find the $165,000 and we can close on the property if you want the property?
Mayor, counsel, we are recommending, if you can see your way clear, to go ahead and close this, this year, just move the money up. It's, it's, as the city attorney indicated, it complicates it beyond belief to try to stretch it out over three years. And that has been part of why it's taken so long to get this back to you. So that's our recommendation.
Okay, thank you, Carl.
Motion to do that, then.
Okay.
Move it all up to this year.
Okay, there's been a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second?
And for discussion, I don't think we should put timeframes on Mr. Hasty. I think he's got a good, you know, 30, 40 more years in him, so.
I'm sorry, I look at actuarial tables.
Yeah, okay. Very morbid stuff.
All right, there's been a motion and a second? Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman McCorumba?
Aye.
Councilwoman Duit?
Aye.
Councilwoman Slackto? Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilwoman O'Flynn?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Forbes?
Aye.
Okay.
And I'll let Mr. Thompson know we can close. We'll, we'll have you execute the contract, and we can close soon. The next is Mediterranean North CDB. We have actually the attorney from Hopkins, Green and Sam, I lost the name. What they're doing is merging, it was not a, something that CDDs could do when the CDD formed. So just like Pelican Landing discussed merger, and you have two CDDs in this case, because you can now have it across county lines, they'll create one. They're still obligated for all their contracts and requirements. We have an NPDS requirement, Collier County doesn't, so that's one where it would affect them, but that's about it. And this is not something that you would have a hearing in front of you. This could go straight to a DOA officer and then Flawak, right? Okay, which is the governor and cabinet.
Okay. Counsel?
Motion to approve.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second? Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Duit?
Aye.
Councilwoman Slackto?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilwoman O'Flynn?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman McCorumba?
Aye.
Okay. Yes?
Alex Boswell, Assistant City Attorney, for the record. This item is brought to you for the purpose of seeking direction as to whether to proceed with an ordinance dissolving the Beach Road Estate CDD, Community Development District. This community development district's jurisdiction is in East Benita, east of Village Walk Community. Requested dissolution pursuant to state law, because they have no outstanding financial obligations or any current maintenance responsibilities. They're established by ordinance, so CDDs have to be dissolved by ordinance. If you direct us to go forward, staff will schedule for advertisement and then two hearings.
Okay, counsel?
So moved.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second? Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Slackto?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilwoman O'Flynn?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman McCorumba?
Aye.
Councilwoman Duit?
Aye.
Okay, great.
I have another ordinance for permission to advertise, scheduling of July 19th to July, and also on August 2. And this is one that was requested by the sheriff's office, and it would allow trespassing on city property. At this point, the sheriff's office cannot do so. There are some cases on point where government property is treated a little different with... And this would make a process, an appeal process, if anybody is trespassed, so that they're, they're able to be on government lands when necessary.
So moved.
Motion and a second? Prez, anything to add? Okay, buddy. Okay, great. Very good. Motion and a second? Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Real quick, this is on all city property, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. It just says on city property, I always make sure it's all.
No. Thanks, Greg. Okay, roll call, please.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilwoman O'Flynn?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman McCorumba?
Aye.
Councilwoman Duit?
Aye.
Councilwoman Slackto?
Okay, next one, we're at a crossroads, and what's happened on medical marijuana treatment centers is that Senate Bill 8A was passed to become law, and it's a six-month legislation. The six-month legislation says, "Hey, cities, you can ban, but if you allow them in your area, you're marijuana dispensing entities, you're not allowed to have any..." Well, your regulations on it has to be the same as pharmacies, not drugstores. And John reminded me that drugstores and pharmacies are two different things.
Thanks, yeah.
So pharmacies are, can be everywhere. They're in your grocery stores, they're in your department stores, they're in strip malls. Our biggest concern was a strip mall issue. The recommendation of staff is that you should ban it at this time unless there is legislation put in place. And this legislation is also working that since it's only six months, until one day we have something where we can do, have things in place for zoning and locational requirements. If, I would also make the recommendation that during that process, during the ban, they're able to be on government lands when necessary.
So moved.
Motion and a second, prez, anything to add? Okay, buddy. Okay, great. Very good. Motion and a second, further discussion? Roll call, please.
Real quick, this is on all city property, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. It just says on city property, I always make sure it's all.
Thanks, Greg. Okay, roll call, please.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilwoman O'Flynn?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Corumba?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dwyer?
Aye.
Councilwoman Slakta?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilwoman O'Flynn?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Corumba?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dwyer?
Aye.
Okay, great.
I have another ordinance for permission to advertise, scheduling of July 19th to July, and also on August 2. And this is one that was requested by the sheriff's office, and it would allow trespassing on city property. At this point, the sheriff's office cannot do so. There are some cases on point where government property is treated a little different with people. And this would make a process, an appeal process, if anybody is trespassed, so that they're able to be on government lands when necessary.
So moved.
Motion and a second, prez, anything to add? Okay, buddy. Okay, great. Very good. Motion and a second, further discussion? Roll call, please.
Just as a quick follow-up, the legislature did you no favors in terms of how they allowed you to make a decision? Because a pharmacy is a relatively easily permitted use in terms of location, so even though they put together what I believe is a pretty good list of separation requirements from other uses, locations for pharmacies are pretty widespread. I know this council had previously expressed interest in allowing for dispensaries here as long as they are appropriately located, and we had hoped to have legislation that would allow us to work towards that. However, based on what I've seen here, I really have a problem with saying yes, because you wind up saying yes to a lot more than you'd want to if you had actual authority to govern this use like you would every other use.
Okay, thank you, John.
What's gonna happen in Tallahassee?
In six months, theoretically, they're supposed to come up with new legislation, but it only took them over a year to come up with this, so I had.
Aren't they at a session?
They are. The statute. This came up in a special session.
If you look at what's called page five of the particular statute, it says here the intent is that this act shall expire six months after the effective date of the amendment. So that it's a stopgap measure.
And I believe that at that point, if they don't pass additional legislation, we'll be left, again, in the wilderness to wait until somebody provides direction.
Quite frankly, if we could say we only wanted one or two now, the legislation does limit dispensing entities. Each MMTC can have 25, well, the threshold of users is under 100,000, and then there's a trigger once it goes over. So right now, you could only have 175 facilities for retail throughout the state of Florida. Now, all of them, for people who have health issues, all of them can provide by transportation. You can't ship marijuana, that would be a big no-no, but you, across state lines especially. But you can have home delivery, all of them do, and we do have some within our geographical areas. My understanding is both Lee County, Collier, and Cape Coral are looking at facilities at this point.
Okay, Fred, I'm sorry, Fred, then Steve.
No, I was just gonna point out, at that same meeting I was at last week for the Lake of Cities, they had a presentation on all the stuff that happened in that quick session they had, and this was one of them. And there's one other option that could happen, and that would be, in fact, there's a reasonable possibility, because that year you're gonna be in is a major election year. Everybody gets queasy with what they want to do. They may also extend that ordinance that expired, or law, statute, to a longer length, go another year or something like that.
What are other cities doing on this, do you know?
Pardon?
Do they say what other cities are doing?
All of the above. There's, some are banning, some are approving it. One thing about, that I thought, and that was, if you open the floodgates now, and people were to come in and get permits for that, then even if the statu, even if they revise the statute to give us control, you're gonna be into a Burt Harris where permits have already been, yeah, I think.
Steve?
Yes, thank you. Audrey, would you just make sure we all understand, if I come out of Dr. William Hidis's office, and I've got a condition that he says medical marijuana can help you, what do I do?
I believe what you do is, you can go to the Department of Health compassionate care website, so it's specifically to compassionate care, and you would register on that site, I believe, first of all, Dr. William Hidis needs to be a prescribing physician on that site.
Which is?
He can't just write you one, because, you know, he has to first make that step. Then you become a registered, oh gosh, I forgot the word.
Medical marijuana user.
Right. The proper term. At which point, the people who have point of sale can sell to you. Now, you can purchase from any of the seven MMTCs. It's called, it's vertical, so they do all the growing, processing, cultivation, transport, and retail. So if you are wanting to open up your own facility, you cannot do it unless you are within that vertical group. And that, that's a state requirement. You would then go on their websites, or you would, and look at what products they have offered, or, which, at this point, I believe is oil, there's some vaporizers, I don't believe anybody, I don't know if anybody, or very few have actual smoking marijuana at this point. But whatever you would be able to purchase, you would purchase at the right strength based on the prescription, and then you'd be able to utilize.
And to the best of your knowledge, that could be distributed back to the individual need quickly?
Right. You would have the transportation, and they have, the law is interesting, because it has manifest requirements, it's like cradle to grave for controlled substances. Now, they do have some language in there, I question as to the constitutionality, but that's on a whole different part of the issue, not on the actual marijuana part.
Good, thank you.
Okay. What are communities around us doing, do you know?
Astero is looking to work with us, as they have throughout this entire process, because it does make sense that what we do is what they do. However, I think at this point, they are leaning towards following the same direction that we're giving. I don't think they have heard this, and I'm not even sure when it's scheduled.
That's correct. I talked with both Nancy, my counterparts, Nancy Stroud, as well as Derek Rooney, and it has not been scheduled yet. When the law passed, I provided them with a copy. Now, they adopted a moratorium that is longer than ours. Our moratorium expires August 3. So that's why I said I'm at a point in the road.
Can we extend a moratorium?
Sure.
Okay. As opposed to making a definitive decision?
That's perfectly fine.
Can I make a motion to do that?
Second.
Okay, and there's been a motion and a second, further discussion? Roll call, please.
I just have a question about the adjustments to the pharmacies. What is, what did you suggest that we should be working on?
That we amend the LDC provisions related to pharmacies. So the special law, or the law in place says you have to treat them for your locational permitting the same as you would treat a pharmacy. And I don't think we have any pharmacy locational zoning requirements, local government requirements. Pharmacies are regulated, but they regulate through the Department of Health.
So now they could be anywhere, is what you're saying?
Not necessarily anywhere, but there are a multitude of zoning districts where they are permitted. And right now, because they are easily to locate, that would also, minus the separation requirements that are in the state statute, would allow these dispensaries to be in those same locations, as long as they were far enough away from other uses.
So you're suggesting that we tighten that up?
It's something to look at. As you learn today, every time that there is an action, there is an equal and opposite, sometimes more vocal reaction, so.
And we're gonna, if we extend the moratorium, we do it for what, seven or eight months or six?
Six months.
Just six months from today?
Six months.
From the expiration.
Right.
And that will take care of what, coincide with what they're doing with the change? Because when is, there's six months.
Right, I need to check our moratorium, make sure I stay under the one-year.
Okay.
Did I say so?
I was gonna say, yeah, we've had a motion and a second, but is there more discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Councilwoman O'Flynn?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Corumba?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dwyer?
Aye.
Councilwoman Slakta?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilwoman O'Flynn?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Slakta?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Great, very good. Hey, Matt.
Oh, wow.
Oh, thank you. So the next item is permission to advertise an ordinance. Now, unlike Parks and Rec, where you've heard a lot of discussion of the fees, now you're gonna hear from Matt as the fees, and this is to bring him in line with other communities in the actual cost of inspections. Matt?
Matt Feeny, for the record, Public Works Director. I'll keep this fairly brief, but we basically did a couple of things. We looked at the staff time that's involved with our right-of-way permitting, as well as our driveway permitting, and evaluated how many hours we spend internally reviewing, as well as externally, the level of service we provide in terms of survey and layout. We compared those numbers, which were more than what we currently charge in terms of the equivalent staff hours, and we compared that, then, new fee to some of our existing communities, including Astero, Lee County, the city of Fort Myers, as well as Collier County. Mostly, in the driveway areas, we found some parity with those communities, so we adjusted our fees accordingly. There are some areas where it does diverge drastically, particularly when you get into the commercial connections down in Collier County, their fee schedule is a little different. So we tried to kind of match what we saw with Astero, as well as Lee County in those cases. But we feel that these fees would help us with cost recovery of staff time that's involved in these events, and are commensurate with what we see locally here.
Okay, counsel?
Real quick, Matt, just a couple questions. For one question, what I noticed was, like on both of them, where it says after-the-fact double residential fee, is that 520, is that the actual one, or double that 520?
No, that would be the fee.
Okay. And on the commercial one, you didn't really go doubled in one, okay, never mind.
We could take out the, no, it's double in size.
Do you mean double in fee or double?
That's the way it used to be. It used to be if you got popped without pulling a permit, it was double the.
That's correct.
It's basically close. We, I was looking at what you had in Naples, as well as.
It is the same, but it's actually a double-sized driveway, as opposed to a single-lane driveway.
All right.
Counsel? Anything else?
Move to approve.
Okay. There's been a motion and a second, further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Corumba?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dwyer?
Aye.
Councilwoman Slakta?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilwoman O'Flynn?
Aye.
concludes my agenda, I just want to point out that the Village Walk of CDD property, Village Walk of Bonita Springs CDD property, we received a special warranty deed, it was signed, executed, we have the closing, so Logan Boulevard.
Great. Thank you, Audrey. Very good. Okay, city manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Any questions on A or B from council? Trying to move this along. Also, I'm just notifying the mayor and council, as well as public, that Lee County's solid waste is going to have an increase in waste assessments and disposal rates from $195.21 per year to $206.35 per year. That's an increase of about $11 per year. These have nothing to do with collection costs. These have all to do, basically, with disposal fees, with those costs going up, and they're looking to recover those. No vote required by council, but we are required to bring this to council and make you and the public aware of it.
Carl, is that an outside vendor, that's, they set the fee for them? Is that the way it works?
They, under, they do an independent rate study. Okay, so I think they make a recommendation to the county staff, they make that recommendation to the commissioners, they approve it, life goes on.
But the county doesn't get the money? The outside vendor get, that's the way it works? Or no?
They get a cut.
Well, they get a cut, but the outside, but there's multiple outside vendors. We have advanced, somebody else may have.
Waste management.
Waste management.
Okay.
Those are the ones that, county will get a portion of it, because they're part of the operation on the back end of collection.
All right.
Also, by interlocal.
Great. Thank you.
Okay, and then one more thing?
Arlene's got this.
On June 19th, the city council set as a selection committee for RFQ 17012. There was a ranking that was provided with Alta Planning and Design Number One, Sprinkle Consulting Number Two, and Stag Tech Number Three. We'd be looking for council to confirm that decision, as council today. At that point, staff will begin discussions with the number-one selected firm.
Okay, yes, Fred.
And I want to clarify, additionally, he was chosen by Australia to be on a lead team where he was gone for close to a month, so.
Okay.
Okay, that's it.
Thank you, Amy. Greg?
The only thing I have, kind of a personal, professional thing, they've started the mural on the side of Station One, so, go by and see it, they've got probably a quarter of it, not even a quarter of it done, it's by Laurent. I'll butcher the last name, I'll just go with Laurent with the first name. So, we started that, so it should take him, he said, less than a month, so he's getting a pretty good job. The rain holds off quicker, obviously.
No Donald Duck.
Oh.
Great, thank you. Greg, Steve?
Yeah, just a reminder about July 4th parade, and the other thing I just want to recognize, Dave Grassi, who looks over Riverside Park, looks over all our veterans monuments and everything, and he donated a POW flag, am I correct, Arlene? Out of his own pocket, so that's, just thank you, Dave Grassi.
Great, thank you. Peter?
Two quick things. Is council, particularly mayor, are you okay if I pursue this concept, this stewardship thing, in chatting with Wonder Gardens people? Is council all right with that?
Aren't we going to have a workshop on that?
Yeah, that's what I thought.
No, the notion I believe we had was that we'd have to agree on that, they'd have to agree, the workshop would be with that behind us. In other words, the workshop would not be a negotiation about leases.
Oh, okay.
How about performance measures?
Well, that-
That's why I'm not totally, I wasn't quite sure what you were talking about when you said that the first time, and I'm still not.
Well, it's late, but let me just try it in a nutshell, which is, if we don't have set terms, if we have a lease, and we are working together in trust, right, then every year, both sides have the ability to see how it's going. That in itself is a built-in measurement tool. That's not to say we wouldn't agree upfront about what the vision is and how we would do it. That's why, well, all right, so.
No, I think that should be part of it. I'm not sure about this exit ramp that you've suggested, whether that'd be good for them or us, you know?
Well, that's why I'm asking a question.
Because I think it's like uncertainty, I'm not comfortable with that.
So, I'm trying to sound like, you know, other people have said this before, I'm trying to figure out a way to dock this ship. Because we're having, well, Carl, why don't you recite a little bit, I mean, I'm sure you've talked to other council members about, you know, the issue of if the lease is long, they need to have performance measures, and you've got to negotiate that, or, maybe I'll take a shout out.
I agree, like you said, I think it should be a symbiotic relationship that we go in this together. If it's more of a landlord-tenant, then it's not going to have that same feeling.
Right, right. Amy, I'm not suggesting that there wouldn't be agreed-upon standards of what we'd expect. At a minimum, it would be that they'd keep, it would be everything that would be normally in a lease, all right, in terms of upkeep, maintenance, all of that. And that was built into, a large part of it was built into the original deal, and it was also built in, actually, in the loan document, all that type of stuff. So, I mean, that's that in there, but I just write, but my view is, if we all sat down and said, I'm repeating myself, I'm sorry, but this is the vision of what we want it to be, and by vision, I mean storyboard, this has to be worked on. Storyboards, in two or three years, this section will like, that section will be like, there'd be a gazebo there, et cetera. Develop a capital plan with respect to that, and I think they're amenable, considering if we had suggestions, other board members as well, I mean, at least Trish said that, she was asking me about that. So, we're working together, then, I don't know what, and then we have basically an evergreen lease, one that just continues out, but everybody has to, you know, once a year, or if they feel it's necessary, they take stock, how's it going? And hopefully, it'll be going very well. If it's not, it's not. As opposed to, I don't know what, in terms of performance measures. Because you have performance measures built into a long-term lease, you're going to spend a lot of time writing specific performance measures, and then trying to apply those in a contract. And I just don't think that's, I think that's extra baggage here. Unless, and if there were some specific performance measures, I think they'd be worked into the dialogue. That's, I'm trying to like to get going on this.
I understand where you're trying to get going. I mean, I understand what you're trying to do, but, you know, the vision and the, like, even the capital plan that you're suggesting, that, to me, seems like it's a performance measure.
Okay.
Get with the program, show us what you want to do, we accept it, we all collegial work on it.
Right.
And then deliver on it.
Right, exactly.
All right.
That's what I'm saying.
That, to me, is a performance measure.
That's what I thought.
But, the other thing is, is if you don't have it put into, in kind of black and white, so to speak, it's so hard to reverse, I mean, let's say it didn't go well. If it goes well, there's no problem, no matter what, how we write this, it'll be right.
Right.
But what if we have a problem? Then what do we do about it?
If you have a problem, it's not working, it's obviously it's not working, hopefully it would never come to that.
How do we know that it's obviously not working?
By asking questions, and either side has the right, God forbid, it's not necessary to use it, to say, guys, it's not working, let's sit down, this marriage is not working, let's part ways. And either side has the right to do that.
I think that's the offering if you're talking about, once a year, we'll look at it.
Yeah, and they will too.
And things are going to happen, I don't-
Right, things are going to happen.
I mean, I'm okay with, you know, them putting the storyboards in the vision, but to put that in writing, if something happens, they have an off-year of fundraising, and they said they were going to put up three gazebos and two benches and this, and they don't make it, we're not going to-
We're not going to pull out, right.
That's why I don't want to put it in writing, we got their concept, we know what they want.
But I would like to think that if the building isn't being maintained correctly and all that, that we are going to do something.
That's already in the loan documents, or whatever, that we've already done.
Well, yeah, but we're starting out with a plain piece of white paper now. No, we're doing that. They would do, we're doing that. There would be a lease, that would have everything Fred's talking about, that would have everything that was in the loan agreement, et cetera. It's just, what I'm trying to get off of, because I think it's an unnecessary conversation, is this dialogue of, we're just giving you two years, no, we want 20 years, we want 100 years. That, to me, is a side show.
My conversation that I had with the two board members was that there would be some number that would include the term of the lease, and that there would be some hard performance, in a sense of articulated performance measures, one of which was described as the development of a capital plan and the timing of it. That was one of them, to at least provide it, whereas, we were asking them, what can we do?
Right.
And then, we could see whether they could do what they said they could do, and, you know, another one was they should be operationally positive, you know, not, well, break even. That was another thing that was discussed. So, I don't see why any of those things would be, should not be included. And so, that when we come to the point, every year that we're going to have a reevaluation, that those are the things that we can point to and say, these are the things you're going to be, you know, evaluated on. It's just like what we're talking about with the manager, and with Audrey.
See, I'm in a different mindset. I don't think we're, this is a volunteer group, I don't believe we're giving them a test to evaluate them, all right? However, it ought to be, in other words, we ought to be working together with them to just advance making this place flourish. You know, I just, I don't think that's, and we're going to see, I mean, you know, God forbid, they're not making any money, they're not going to want to continue. I'm not saying that's going to happen, but it's got to work, or it's not going to work. And the biggest exit ramp for them, keeping using that word, I've got to create that word here, is, they can say it's not working, or we can say it's not working, but it's built on trust and collegiality. Either that, or somebody ought to write up a whole list of criteria and go negotiate it.
I thought that's what we were doing.
No, I don't, I was, we never talked about that.
That was the discussion that I had with them, that they were going to come back.
Well, that's why we're talking here, we haven't talked.
Yeah, that's a problem, when you talk one-on-one, that we each have these conversations.
I didn't mention the lease to them.
Well, that was what our discussion was, a lot about the lease, because they wanted to have a long-term lease, and I said, I didn't like the number, and that, you know, we were more in line with having a shorter-term lease, and then I said, well, maybe we can come to some compromise where we could have some number, which is some extensive, but that we would have these points along the way where there was an evaluation in regard to what profits we're making. And at that point, we would determine if we want to extend the lease or maintain it the way it is. That was my discussion.
So, if you took the YMCA, I'll just take some I was a chair of, and you said, we're going to create a set of criteria every year for that volunteer board, and this is how we're going to measure progress, I just think that's a pretty, I mean, certain things are basic, and they can be worked in, but I, but we're going around, I think we've got to figure out a way to get to someplace that works here.
Well, in my discussion, I said to the board, you give us the criterion, I mean, I didn't say, I was going to tell them what the criterion was. I said, it's your job to determine what goals you set for yourself. So, I don't know how-
I agree with goals, I'm just questioning this, kind of like, I don't know how-
Peter, your recommendation again was what?
My recommend, well, I don't want to do, my recommendation is that I pursue with them, and that's why I'm bringing it up, it's a significant decision here, that I pursue with them the concept of, and I can do it with Carl, of stewardship, working together, obviously, the city's taking over the property, we're done with that, there's obviously no default, we're just going to work it out, so we're taking it over, and that they would, in that context, the lease would be an evergreen lease, by which I mean, it would continue ad infinitum, all right, but, at any time, either party can give a year's notice, a six-months notice, and say, guys, you know, we've got to sit down, because this is not working, and maybe you've got to make these adjustments, because this is what I'm seeing, I don't like that, this is what I'm seeing, I don't like that, otherwise, we're going to have to terminate that, so it's kind of self-policing, all right, both sides. And that, before that's all agreed, and that's why we need some time here, we actually sit down with them, and, down there, maybe not the whole board, because there are 20 of them, but, you know, we sit down with them, and they present what their plans are, what their vision is. I think, before we have a final agreement, it's healthy for everybody to have a stated plan for capital development, and what, for capital needs, which are very real there, I'm kidding ourselves if we don't think so, and how and what their capital plan is for that. My guess is that's $2 million. That's my rough guess, all right? So, I mean, in the past, I've talked to people like Bob Gillette about it, and what do you think, and that, you know, there's no one doing science here, but in terms of what needs, with all the concrete down there, et cetera. And then, we go forward and hold hands on that basis.
Okay.
That's my idea.
I support that, and Greg used the word symbiotic, and that's what it sounds like to me, and I'd be more willing to put, but before I-
No, what I was going to say is just, and I don't know if it's a good suggestion or not, would it be, or, and this kind of goes to Audrey too, would it be helpful if, when you went with these meetings or this stewardship, could you take a member of staff with you? That way, staff could, the staff could articulate that to all-
And by the way, if you want to do it, it's fine too.
No, no, it's not that, I'm just-
No, 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 I'm not saying that you're suggesting that, I've got a lot, if anybody else on council wants to do it, I'm more-
I'm just suggesting staff go with you, that way, instead of you coming back to the dais and doing it.
Right, he can-
That person can contact all of us after each meeting, say, this is what we're doing.
But I didn't mean any response to what you're saying, it's a different point. I would love if somebody else on council would want to do this, I just-
I am on the board, so I could bring it up to them at the next board meeting.
Except you think it's a lousy idea.
Well, I think, I think we're actually saying the same thing, but in a different language.
Okay, good.
Because, to me, you actually do have deliverables, but they're an evolving deliverable, and, you know, you see if things are working, you know, and if they're not, you know, it's ever-changing, so.
And the other thing I would say, Mike, because if you're going to do it, it'd be great, is that, and what I said to Trish is, you know, there's been, all this, you know, great work doing, but none, but there's been a little of this going on here, that's obvious, right? And, you know, there's, it's a matter of, this city has made the biggest contribution in the city's history to this nonprofit, right? And the examples I gave were, and I know it's getting late, but the examples I gave were, when the Y was shutting down, and Richard Barber and everybody else was coming in here saying, keep it open, the city said, no, all right? And we shut down an institute, an institution that the people of Bonita had paid $7 million for, was let go, all right? And I'm not saying city council made a bad decision, but that's what happened, all right? Turned out, that was only $400,000, okay, that the city didn't come up with. The other example I gave was, last year, we sat for two months in many meetings, trying to work up what turned out to be $2 million, we thought it was $4, it turned out to be $2 million for the Quasian Study. So, I was trying to put that in perspective, this $3 million, it's the same point Greg made, as you said a few weeks ago, this $3 million investment is major, it's a major commitment by the city. So, for your fundraising, it shouldn't be, and I didn't get into the lease, but I'm just saying, it's like, for us, their fundraising should be, oh my gosh, this lease, they could let us go in a year. No. The correct story is, the city has just made a $3 million investment in this. And you put that together with the fact that they've been working hard, they've raised $600,000 over time, that's a tremendous story. If you have a capital idea for capital improvements and a budget to go with it, that's a tremendous story for a possible donor.
All right. I'm confused now, who's going to take the lead out of this? Mike, or?
Fred, go ahead, Fred.
No, I was going to say, whether it's Peter, or Mike, or whoever, or Greg, tell them to make their capital plan strategy what I call realistic, because they, that's probably one of the weaker areas they have right now, they tend to-
Correct.
-over-believe what they can do, and then they come up short, as we know, so. Mike, I'd be thrilled if you did it. Yeah, I'm not being critical, it's just a real-
Mike, do you want to do it?
We're great.
It doesn't matter, or even Amy, I mean, Amy sounds like she's into it.
They don't want to talk to me.
Well, we need to believe her.
Yeah, no.
No, um, no, it's-
I mean, it's up to Mike, I don't care.
I think it's really, I think the reasons we get into issues are because we do one-on-ones with, when we have these discussions, the same thing that the manager, the manager got into issues because he had to talk for us, and he didn't know, and then he sent us, each of them, to talk to each of us, and we each had a different thing to talk about, but one of the things that-
With different people, different board members.
With different people, not the same board members, so even if you, I don't even know who this emissary would speak with, but I think it should be sort of the full board in some ways, and in the full council. But one of the most critical things that they talked to me about was the fact that they could not fundraise effectively because they did not have the reliability, the uncertainty. They were uncertain about a lease that was renewable after three years. How are they going to, I mean, if that tact that they had with me had validity, it's going to have even more import if we're going to, we're able to, you know, sort of call the relationship after, on a one-year basis. So, I don't see how that accomplishes-
Well, we're treating this like, but the language you're using is treating it like a negotiation.
Like a what?
And I'm saying, the language you're using, in my mind, is treating it like a negotiation. I'm trying to get away from all of that.
Yep.
Well, there's no way that we could get away-
These are our fellow citizens who are working as volunteers, side by side with us, to make this city, what is now a city property, a flourishing success. And, and if, you know, the answer should be, it's a $3 million investment, what do you think we're going to do? Make a $3 million investment and walk around? Walk away?
That's what I said, exactly.
Right.
But they didn't accept that.
Well, that's the conversation you had, and I'm not saying, I don't know what that board, that's why I'm bringing it here.
And you're not suggesting that every six months, or every year, we evaluate it? It's just that if any, anybody at the table comes forward and says, hey, this isn't working, they give a six-month, or a year notice, it's not, it's not an evaluation every six day.
Right, right. And it also, absolutely.
I mean, it's no different than anything else, if something gets brought up to, to the mayor, hey, the Wonder Gardens is going downhill, he's going to bring it up, and we're going to talk about it.
Right, right.
Right, as would any of you, absolutely, absolutely.
Okay, so who is it?
Mikey, well, I don't know.
I'll be at the meeting, so.
The man in purple.
Okay, do we need a motion on that?
No, no, whatever.
Consent.
Mike, that's good.
I would go with Carl, I think.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
No, thank you.
Yeah, great.
Thanks, Mike.
We've got two things, what was your other one, Peter?
What's that?
Did you have more?
Oh, the other one is, and it's, I just want to make a statement, and I don't want to go on at length at all, but, we are in a litigation, and advice was given yesterday with respect to the thing we talked about before, and that's why I thought it was more than appropriate, considering that advice that was clearly given, to bring this back to the outside council who's involved in the litigation before we go forward. And, you know, it's similar to what we went through with Peter before, I don't want to be airing out stuff here, but I'm very disappointed. So, thanks.
And I think, you know, to that point, I think a very good point was raised by, I forget who it was, towards the end there of the presentation, you know, these are major decisions, if we do have outside council, they need to be available. They do. I mean, I'm not looking, I'm not per se at you, Audrey, but I guess I kind of am.
I'm the right person to look at.
Yeah, we are.
If I had realized, and if I know a time and date, a time and certainty of when we're going to hold things, because this was a very long meeting, I would have certainly had Mr. Arline on the phone, so he could provide input, or Mr. Theriault.
Right, no, and, like I said, I am looking at you, however, right, I just, very good point, very good point raised.
Let me just add, the point that was clear yesterday, Audrey's recollection is not mine is, was the point that was raised.
Yep.
So, I'm not happy.
Great. Well said, well said.
All right.
Anything else, Pete?
No, thank you.
Okay, great. Mike?
It's after four, I'll pass.
It's almost five somewhere.
Fred?
You know it's after four, I want to get to something else.
You want to get to-
He wants to get to something else.